Okay, hello everyone and welcome. The time is 12:01, so let's get started with today's public hearing. My name is Ketcher Baden, I'm on staff with the State Board of Education. And we also have with us our Executive Director Alicia Williams, as well as the President of the Board, President Lucas Narducci, as well as at least one other board member, Kristi Burton. And although they might not be signed into Zoom right now, we might also have a couple other board members in addition to those two watching the hearing live right now. So this is the opportunity for individuals to express their views or concerns in a public setting on the proposed board rules regarding the empowerment scholarship account program. Of course, this is a virtual public hearing, so bear with me as we kind of lay out the rules of the road here and how this is going to work in the next few hours. First, what's going to happen is board staff, probably myself until I need a little bit of a break, is going to call the first speaker along with next two speakers after them, so we know who's up. So for example, we actually have Catherine Bolts is the first up today, and after her will be Kayla Svedden and Dominique Judge. And then after Catherine concludes her remarks, then I'll hand it over to Kayla and say after her is Dominique and Patricia. And we'll keep going down the list that way. The entire order of people who signed up to speak today was emailed to you. So check your email if you want to know where you're at on the list. If you don't think you're going to be able to stick around for that long, or if you had a request to maybe get moved around, unfortunately, we are just going in the order that was provided when people signed up to speak, which is actually that column on that emailed list that says registration time. It's just the order that we received them, and that's the order we're going down. If that time that we do end up getting to you doesn't work for you, there will be a couple of other opportunities in this public hearing, especially at the end, but also in the middle, where you might have an opportunity if those times do work. Or at the end of the day, if none of those times work for you, you can always email your comments to that ESA feedback inbox where we've been collecting feedback on these rules as we go along. So when it is your turn to speak, staff's going to unmute you. And because this is a webinar, we can't have video on, but we do hear you, as hopefully you hear me now. If you're on Zoom, when we go to unmute you, a little box is going to pop up that asks if you do want to be unmuted, and just please check that box, and then you can begin your comments. Now, if you're calling into the meeting on the phone, then when staff unmutes you, there's just going to be a voice that pops up that says, "You're now unmuted," and there's nothing else that you have to do unless you have manually muted yourself on your phone, in which case you got to double check that as well. But after that, you can begin your comments. Now, we understand technology doesn't always work as smoothly as we'd like. So after we call on you, we'll probably give you a couple beats to either check that box or realize that your name was just called and rushed to the computer. But after we give you those couple beats, we are going to have to move on. We have a lot of folks here, and I'll talk about that later. But if we move on, and because you weren't there, we didn't think you were there, there will be a couple breaks that we're going to have, where we'll immediately go back to people that we missed, and we'll have breaks, time after those breaks for people to speak. And we'll also have time at the very end of the meeting for anybody else who missed their opportunity. So we want to provide a couple options here if we didn't get around to. When you do speak, each speaker has no more than three minutes for public comment. Now, as a courtesy, we'll have a timer that pops up to notify how much time is remaining. And at the end of that time, we're going to ask that you conclude your remarks. Not a respect for everybody's time, all those other folks who want to speak. If you don't conclude your remarks after we ask you to, we do reserve the right to cut you off. Now, we don't want to have to do that, of course, and we want to be respectful and let people finish up. But we do have a lot of folks that we want to hear from today, and we want to be respectful of everybody's time. Now, those breaks I alluded to earlier, we are going to take one at 1 o'clock, and we're going to take another at 2 o'clock. They're just going to be brief, they're going to be about five or 10 minutes. It's just enough so staff can catch up on the attendees who've come in, but also to let you and everybody else kind of run to the restroom or take a break or whatever is needed. Right when we come back from those breaks, we're going to go back to the people who we missed and go down to see if they're available, and then we'll pick up where we left off. You don't have to log off during those breaks. We'll still be recording, we'll still be going. You could just, you know, hang out for a couple minutes, and then we'll get going again. And we do have 71 people signed up to speak today. So that means it's going to take us about four hours, almost four hours. And we anticipate everybody who submitted a request to speak will have the opportunity to provide a public comment. But board staff does preserve the right to limit the number of presenters if something unforeseen occurs. And we do this for all of our public hearings, this is just kind of standard language, I don't want anybody to get worried. We don't think that's going to be an issue here today, and we certainly want to hear from everybody. But we just can have to throw that out as a disclosure, as we do with every public here. Neither board staff nor board members respond to the comments made to the public hearing. Remember, this is solely a time for you all to be heard. Now, we are, at the same time, though, working to schedule a more informal public forum next week, so we can interact a little more freely, we can answer questions that you have, we can ask follow-up questions. We could try to explain, you know, maybe what the board's thinking on some things. But right now, this is solely the opportunity for you to provide comments, and neither staff nor board members are going to be responding to you. But the recording of this meeting and a summary is going to be provided to the board to follow up and provide the board with information on any issues raised. And finally, a reminder, as some of you, this was in the materials, certainly in the public agenda, this is a public meeting, and so that this meeting is being livestreamed right now. So just please be mindful of that, and also just please be respectful in your remarks. We don't have to, want to have to cut somebody off because they're being profane or disrespectful or anything like that. We want to hear from you, we want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to hear. And we want to make sure that you're aware that the meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. Finally, if you have questions, you could, the chat box is available. If you're on Zoom, you can kind of hover over the bottom there, and there should be a little toolbar that pops up, and you can open up the chat box. You can send us a chat, and we can try to resolve that for you as best as possible. You can also email the ESA inbox, which is also being monitored if you have questions that you would like addressed. So with all of that out of the way, is sort of the precursor here. I think we can start jumping into our public comments. So we'll have this slide up the entire time. These are just the reminders, this is basically just a real quick summary of what I provided here. And we'll also have our handy little timer up. So with that, our first speakers today to kick us off, our first up is Catherine Bolts, followed by Kayla Svedden and Dominique Judge. So Catherine, if you want to begin your remarks, you may.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. My name is Dr. Catherine Bolts, and first I want to mention my gratitude for the ESA program. My child is twice exceptional, meaning both gifted and he has learning disability. These children are often poorly served in the public schools as gifted programs struggle to support their challenges, while special education programs struggle to support their strength. They have tremendous potential, but they have significant challenges. And I committed to teaching my child at home after I had researched over 30 different school options, including public district schools, charter schools, online schools, and private schools. And ESA allows my child's unique learning needs to be addressed, including both his strengths and weaknesses. So I've chosen a handcrafted education for my child. This includes me teaching him, tutors teaching him, and educational therapies to help him with his areas of challenges. So my comments on the rules for ESA, I greatly appreciate the statement that the rules should not exceed the statute. The ESA handbook should not impose additional requirements, limitations, or punitive measures on an ESA holder that is not prescribed in the statute or in the board's rules. That's an important change. I also want to mention that the restrictions on MCC codes that dictate where ESA debit cards can be used have worked. In April, the Arizona Auditor General did a report on the ESA program. In 2019, over $78 million in ESA funds were awarded for 6,448 students. The auditor reviewed 168,020 approved transactions with those funds and found only one transaction at an unapproved merchant for $30, and that transaction was repaid. I also want to note that the ESA debit cards look remarkably similar to other Bank of America cards. And so it is entirely possible that a parent could make an innocent mistake and use the wrong card. The rules need to address fraud from hacked cards where someone has gotten the card number and is using it incorrectly. The rules also need to address class wallet and make sure that the vendors, who are preferred by parents, will be available for students who are being educated with the ESA scholarship. And the rules should be written clearly and should address the handbook and make sure that it is written clearly to save a lot of time and struggle for both parents and ESA staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Kayla, you're up, followed by Dominique Judge and Patricia Stevens. Kayla, are you with us? Okay. Kayla, if you can hear us but can't speak for some reason, we will circle back to you. So that means we have Dominique Judge up now, followed by Patricia Stevens and Julie Batt. Dominique, if you're with us, go ahead. Looks like Dominique is not with us. And just as a reminder to folks on two counts. One is that if you're logging in on Zoom and calling in, make sure that you only have one of those unmuted, whichever one you want to speak on, otherwise the rest of us might hear an echo. And two, for those of you who might be worried that, you know, we might get to you and you can't unmute, don't worry, you know, we're seeing who's logging in right now on the webinar, and we're unmuting you as you go. It looks like Kayla and Dominique just haven't been able to join us yet, but we'll circle back to them. So that means Patricia Stevens, you're up if you're there, followed by Julie Batt and Harish Talanki.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to start by saying that our family is very grateful for the empowerment scholarship account program. Empowerment scholarship accounts play a pivotal role in our children's success stories, and the families who are part of the program are truly grateful it is an option. We are a new family to ESA, this will be our second year. One of the main challenges I believe the program has is there are not enough transparency and collaboration between the ESA staff and the families. We see this disconnect the most in the interpretation of the statutes by ESA administrators as they write the handbook each year. The handbook and interpretation of the statutes likely contributes to almost 70% of the workload with the staff and families. Streamlining these barriers benefits ESA staff and families, and most importantly, the children on the program. As an ex-state employee, I know all too well how important statutes are to ensure consistency and transparency with tax dollars. Statutes are created to outline what is and is not allowed in a clear concise format. Yes, there are always gray areas that need further review and discussion, but for the most part, statutes provide a clear outline for state-funded programs. Much of the frustration on both sides of the aisle with ESA is the lack of clarity. The statutes may, for example, state no computer hardware, but for some reason, software is then denied or deemed misspending. Another example is the statute that states no consumables, such as papers and pens are used in the example. However, the handbook was written for many years, not allowing workbooks and even reading books. I am sure when the statute was written here, there was never an intent to restrict reading and writing materials to students. Can you imagine the uproar? Still, school districts banned using student funds for purchasing workbooks or reading books. This is a disconnect that needs to be addressed, and perhaps even a rule needs to be implemented that reflects that the ESA handbook is to be written as close to the statutes as possible. Families also need the opportunity, before the handbook is written, to express what our children's needs are. Yes, we understand that at the end, not all requests are able to be allowed. However, we should have a seat at the table and be part of the overall discussion. The group of families that provide feedback should also be diverse and a true representation of the very types of families that utilize the program. There is not a clear-cut way right now for parents to give their name as a possible option to participate on a panel for ESA. Finally, it needs to be stated that the families on the ESA program have the same goal as educators in public schools. We want our children to reach their full potential. We all have the hope that our children, in spite of some of their limitations, will one day not only be successful, but strong and active contributors as Arizona residents. It takes all of us working together on the same page to make their future a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Julie Batt, you're up, followed by Harish Talanki and Kelly Piccinto. Julie?
Yes, this is Julie Batt, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you're a little, you sound a little bit distant.
How about now?
There we go, much better.
Okay, great. I'm an ESA parent that's been around since the beginning, and I manage a couple of support groups, one of which has over 1,200 ESA parents. I've helped hundreds, if not thousands, of ESA parents navigate this program. I've been through three different superintendents, seven to eight different ESA managers, and countless changes in the past nine years. I've already submitted four to five pages of written comments on these rules that can't possibly be summed up in three minutes. This draft is a great start, but as the saying goes, the devil is in the details. I've been in ESA longer than any employees have worked in the ESA department, and thousands of ESA parents and I will still be in the program long after they are gone. These rules need to be detailed enough so that future administration won't feel the need to reinvent the wheel, but flexible enough to grow with new innovative educational and therapeutic techniques for children like mine. For these reasons, my written suggestions specifically address three areas. The spirit in which the ESA statute was created, the way it will be interpreted, and the manner it will be implemented consistently now and in the future. The department must stop making up oppressive policies that are not supported in statutes, as well as start following statutes they've previously ignored thus far. This program is confusing. It doesn't have to be this hard. Communication is often vague and non-existent. Parents want to spend appropriately, but they are afraid to spend their funds. They receive inconsistent information, they don't have the ability to, they don't have the access or the ability to buy the things in class wallets that they need for their children's education, and some even leave because it's just too complicated. These rules in regards to deadlines, approved spending, misuse, appeals, and fraud must be clear, but also written to empower parents to provide the unique education their individual children need. The department should focus on supporting parents, so we parents can focus on our children's education. This is the empowerment scholarship after all, not the oppression scholarship. Thank you for listening, I'm excited and hopeful by what I see so far, and I look forward to seeing additional changes in the next draft.
Thank you, Julie. Next up, we have Harish Talanki, followed by Kelly Piccinto and Jenny Clark. Harish, are you there? Doesn't sound like it. So we'll go to Kelly Piccinto, followed by Jenny Clark and Michael Clark. Kelly? Kelly, if you're there, I can see you are attending, and it looks like now you're unmuted. Kelly, can you hear us okay? Kelly, it looks like you're with us, and it looks like you've been unmuted. I want to try to make sure I give you plenty of opportunity to provide a comment, because otherwise we'll have to circle back to you after 1 o'clock after we take our first break. So if you're still struggling, you could try to jump into the, you could try to jump into the chat, or you could try to email or call. But we can circle back to you. Jessica, there's another Kelly name on the attendees, and it looks like it's her phone rather than on Zoom. Could you unmute that one if possible?
Hi, yeah, are you able to hear me now?
There we go, Kelly, all right, we got you.
Thank you so much, I'm sorry all about that, okay.
No, no, that's all right, that's all right, I'm sorry it took us a while. Go ahead, you got your three minutes.
Thank you, okay. So we are recipients of the ESA account, and my son is a special education student while in the school system. Most recently, he was denied a free and appropriate public education. He was repeatedly denied to be taught with his typical peers in the typical classroom with typical curriculum. He was denied after request after request. Based on our experience, the public school system was not a safe place for him. He was mentally and physically abused by staff. It wasn't a safe place for him, for especially these children, where they're valued and looked at as first class. But you know who and what does this program, this ESA program. This program puts my son, as well as so many other children in the state of Arizona, in a place of feeling worse. Being educated, valued, and safe, most importantly, gives them the education opportunities that they truly deserve. It provides speech, occupational, physical therapy, and many other therapies when your local elementary school says, "No, no, 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 no," repeatedly over again. And it provides curriculum that's appropriate for our children. It provides an opportunity to be with typical peers through various educational therapy opportunities. It provides a safe learning environment, whether that be with private placement or home education. It provides a sense of hope. In regards to the handbook rules, each year I feel as though the handbook should be developed with input of multiple different parents that are enrolled in the ESA program on all sorts of education levels, whether it's home education or in private placement. Curriculum should also be allowed to be developed by the parent in addition to buying prepackaged curriculum. The therapies, therapy, educational therapies should not just be limited to specific types. Any therapy that influences the child's ability or potential to learn should be allowed. Therapy goods and services for students with a disability should include items recommended by the student's net report, the therapist, or team. It should also include standard therapy aids and interventions found in most therapy clinics or special education classrooms. Assistive technology, renting versus buying. For children on IEPs, many items that are used during therapy or in a special education classroom should be allowed to be purchased and not rented. It ends up costing a lot more money. There could at least be a dollar amount set versus low-tech items versus high-tech items that we would be able to purchase under low-tech. Renting a slant board versus purchasing one does not make much sense. Under the curriculum, manipulists should not be limited to only math. There should be several manipulists to help with English, language arts, and other subject areas. Thank you. We are very grateful for this program and the difference it's made in my son's life, from going from non-verbal to speaking and reading and beginning up to close age level.
Thank you, Kelly, and thanks for bearing with us. So we have Jenny Clark, followed by Michael Clark and Allison Wilks. Jenny, go ahead.
Hi, this is Jenny, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you for your time today. My name is Jenny Clark, I am a mother of five children, three of whom are currently on the Arizona ESA program. While the ESA program has been difficult to learn and manage over the past couple of years, we have been incredibly thankful for the opportunities that have been provided for our children as a result of ESA. We hope that with continued engagement from parents, a large number of whom you'll hear from today, we can continue to make the program even more successful for Arizona students and families. I have two points to address. First, in the rules under definitions, how this rule defines misuse of funds is not clear. The concern is that misuse of funds could be applied to a parent who uses scholarship in a way they thought was appropriate, which was only deemed wrong by the department until proven otherwise. Parents who used funds in a way they thought was appropriate are falling under the misuse category. Parents who used funds in a way they thought was appropriate are falling under the misuse category when it may not have been true misuse. The definition doesn't distinguish between those who intentionally or knowingly misused and those who believed it would be approved based on the educational nature of the charge or prior approval of the item in other years or the handbook. I would suggest adding, does not apply to funds clearly used for educational purposes and denied at the discretion of the department. Additionally, a clear definition of fraud should also be included in these rules. Second, many ESA parents, such as myself, have been supportive of the class wallet system because we welcome increased accountability and use of the program. In spite of the fact that the ESA program, according to the recent audit done by the Arizona Auditor General and released this April 2020, found that ESA parents receive, quote, "unhelpful or wrong answers" from ADE staff almost 25% of the time, end quote. And ESA families' rate of misspending at unapproved merchants has fallen to .001%. According to the Auditor General's report, quote, "Concerns with debit card administration have largely been addressed." Our review of over 168,000 approved transactions identified in the department's program between October 2018 and October 2019 found only one successful transaction at an unapproved merchant totaling $30. In spite of the Auditor General's report showing .001% misspending at unapproved merchants, parents are not being given the option to use the class wallet debit card. Parents have now accumulated hundreds of hours trying to figure out how to get our vendors into class wallet with little to no help from the department or class wallet. The process for making a curriculum purchase currently is simple. We go online, we find the curriculum vendor, we purchase the curriculum with our scholarship cards. Under class wallet, we not only have to convince the curriculum vendor to sign up, we have to email them, request the creation of an invoice, submit the invoice to class wallet for approval and purchase, then go back to have the purchase approved. Small curriculum companies, many of our tutors and essential therapists are not going to be able to manage the special process we are now required to use under class wallet. Many vendors have reported back to parents that they've submitted to become vendors and still haven't heard back from the company or ADE. In order to get our children the timely support that they need, whether it's curriculum, tutoring, or therapy, we respectfully request that SBE and ADE continue or allow us to utilize the debit card option with class wallet so that we can continue to meet our children's needs in an effective manner. There is currently no data-driven reason that I can find that this option is being denied to ESA families. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Next up, we have Michael Clark, followed by Allison Wilk and Jay Galushka. Michael, the floor is yours. Want to come on?
Catcher, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. President and board members, my name is Michael Clark. I'm an ESA parent and I'm a practicing attorney in the state of Arizona. I want to mention four issues of concern regarding the ESA program and the proposed rules. First, according to ARS 152403, ADE should receive applications year-round and should approve and issue award letters within 45 days after receiving a completed application. The statute states that ADE will make quarterly transfers of the amounts into the student's account, but it also gives discretion to ADE to use a different transfer schedule. The quarterly distribution makes sense for current ESA families. However, parents that apply and get approved in the middle of a quarter should be funded at a prorated amount, which would, which would be allowed under the statute. For example, the ESA Office promoted an extended application deadline of May 15th this year. Many parents don't yet even know by May 15th what the schooling for the child for next year might look like. Technically, a parent could have applied on May 16th, been accepted within 45 days, but because it was with between quarters, they are not guaranteed funding until the second quarter, which is October. If they're planning to enroll in a school in the fall, they have no funding to start with. Second, there's nothing in the ESA statute that this allows the use of ESA funds in conjunction with personal health insurance for educational therapies. Therefore, ADE should allow therapies to be paid with health insurance and ESA funds. This is already done by public schools to bill the student's Medicaid for the therapies they provide in the school setting. The Division of Developmental Disabilities in Arizona Long-Term Care System also pays therapies in conjunction with parents' insurance and is considered a payer of last resort. As long as the expense is allowed by the statute, there's no reason why parents shouldn't be able to use ESA funds in conjunction with insurance for approved therapies. In essence, ESA students are being penalized because their parents have health insurance. If the legislature wanted, wanted to exclude this practice, they would, they would have included it in statute. Third, currently, after a parent repays the amount for a disputed expense, ADE deducts the amount from the funds the student has available, meaning the student is receiving less ESA funds than he or she is actually entitled to. When a parent repays money to ADE for disputed expense, the fund should be returned to the student's scholarship account for use by the student, especially when the disputed expense was clearly used for educational purposes. Finally, the new class wallet system should include the use of the debit card option. The Arizona Auditor General report from April 2020 found that out of over 168,000 approved transactions between October 2018 and October 2019, only one successful transaction at an unapproved merchant was found. The data does not support prohibiting the use of debit card option that class wallet offers for families. Not making available the use of a debit card makes the ESA program unnecessarily complicated for parents and will dramatically limit the resources students will have access to. This concludes our remarks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Next up. Next up, we have Allison Wilks and Jay Galushka, followed by Emily Smith.
Hi, this is Allison Wilks. Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear. Go ahead, Allison.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the State Board of Education for taking the opportunity to hear from ESA recipients today. My family is grateful to have ESA as a choice. It's allowed my child to truly achieve an individualized education that is appropriate, and I'm happy to say that my child is now thriving. I'd like to speak about the differences between how the statute defines things and how the ESA department chooses to interpret those interpretations. It is often an issue for parents that the department takes liberties in interpreting the rules, which are clearly defined in the statute. Despite this, parents must still seek prior approval for purchases. An example of this that I'd like to share is would, would be that my child's taking a course that requires software and supplemental items. Will need to purchase those in addition to the course tuition. I recently requested approval and was denied. The denial reason I was given was the item is not allowed, software programs are disallowed. When I requested clarification, I was then told I must adhere to state law and the ESA handbook when processing requests. I then requested further clarification in which I provided the statute regarding technology and hardware, as well as the definitions of hardware versus software. I was then asked to give the department time to research this further. Finally, I was told it was approved by the supervisor, and this entire process took a month of back-and-forth emailing between myself and the ESA department. Rules should be broad enough to grow with the times and emerging educational models. They should be clear enough to give autonomy to parents to make educated decisions within the boundaries and not burden the department or SBE with numerous requests for approval. The department should not be interpreting or changing definitions clearly stated in the statute. I'd also like to comment on class wallet. I'm concerned about the accessibility of class wallet. It's come to my attention that the class wallet website is not accessible for parents who have disabilities. There are issues that need to be looked into by the ADE, and that needs to be addressed so that all parents can actually access class wallet for their children's purchases. Thank you so much for your time and allowing me to make a comment today.
Thank you, Allison. Next up, we have Jay Galushka, followed by Emily Smith and Sonia Kravitz. Jay Galushka, I don't know if you're there. And I don't have a first name. It's actually just the letter J. So that means we'll move on. And again, as a reminder for those folks that are not here that, for whatever reason, haven't been able to make this time to speak, we'll circle back after our one o'clock break and after our two o'clock break, and we'll go down the list of folks who we missed and give them another opportunity at those times. That means we're down to Emily Smith, followed by Sonia Kravitz and Natha Smith. Emily Smith, are you there? Actually, don't see an Emily Smith on here as well, or either. So Emily, we'll come back to you if you're listening to us and struggling. Again, if you're having problems connecting for whatever reason, you can always chat us or send an email to the ESA feedback inbox. We'll try to get back to you. Sonia Kravitz, followed by Natha Smith and Schweta Chopra. Sonia, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Sonia. Go ahead.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to comment on the rules process and be part of this today. We are very thankful to ESA as it has given us opportunities to give our child the therapies and the out-of-the-box learning strategies that have made the difference in his growth and progress. I feel one of the most pivotal changes to ESA has been the instigation of class wallet. As a parent, I can understand the need for transparency. I have felt like transparency was with the old system, but I feel like the new system strikes fear in the hearts of parents moving forward. If you're just paying for school, it's not such a big deal, but if you're trying to construct a curriculum and learning materials from a variety of sources, it becomes a nightmare. I feel that some sort of credit card in some capacity is unavoidable because some vendors will not join class wallet, or perhaps you have a one-time purchase and the hassle of everything is just too much. Expecting parents to shoulder expenses and wait for reimbursement is not a viable answer either. Some parents don't have the funds to front expenses, especially at the beginning of the year when sign-ups are underway. I understand that there is also a concern about fraud as well, and I myself have been a victim of hackers just this past year. This has, needs to be taken into consideration and not penalize the parents who are trying to do the right thing. There is going to be risk in any program that is put forward, but it has to be user-friendly in order to serve the community involved. I cannot imagine that the majority of the parents are out to scam ESA. Most of us are so very grateful for another option and try very hard to comply with the rules. Please give us the benefit of the doubt. We are for some safety measures to prohibit fraud, but the funds must be accessible, or what's the point? An example would be when I am in a homeschooling convention and they're offering discounts on curriculum for those who purchase at the conference. These vendors are not going to be able to go through class wallet procedures at the conference, and there could be hundreds of dollars spent on curriculum and books, which would be a lot for someone to float until ESA can reimburse. This is where a class wallet credit card with $500 to $1,000 on it would facilitate the purchases with safeguards of a certain amount loaded at any given time or a pre-authorized amount. There are times when this is warranted, and I would really appreciate the board taking up this concern. There are literally thousands of vendors out there, and they cannot all be on class wallet, so there has to be some way to have flexibility in these kinds of circumstances other than reimbursement. Hopefully, you can understand where I and many others are coming from and that the majority of parents are trying to follow the rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Next is Natha Smith, followed by Schweta Chopra and Hope Dobbins Brown. Natha, if you're there, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Nathan Smith. Can you hear me?
Oh, I'm sorry, Nathan. The, the N was hanging off your name there. Apologies. Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
That's all right. Well, I am a public school teacher, and my, I have three kids that are in the ESA program. And I, I see every day in my classroom the importance of having this ESA program to my children as I see kids in my own school classroom get, get further behind due to maybe classroom management issues that I can't be personable in my teaching strategies with a kid who is maybe on the spectrum or has other special needs that I'm forced to focus on the teaching in my classroom, whether to be able to make a connection with them. I am grateful that my kids have an opportunity to be able to have this one-on-one focus at home using the ESA scholarship opportunity so that they're not left behind and that we're able to see them to, to grow and to take advantage of this individualized learning at their pace. I also see, you know, the ability for certain things that are, that are needed that, you know, if I am, if I ask my administration for certain things that aren't necessarily part of a curriculum, say recorders or, or any other items that could be helped to learn, they just are able to purchase those things and they appear in my, my classroom. And so it would be great as ESA parents and, and being able to have the opportunity to find those things that are not exactly in the curriculum that we might need, maybe a globe or maybe something, you know, like a microscope or a telescope or something that's, you know, designated for educational purposes, purposes that may not be exactly part of a curriculum set. And so with, with that being said, I yield the remainder of my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nathan. Next is Schweta Chopra, followed by Hope Dobbins Brown and Rebecca Crawford. I don't know if we have Schweta Chopra available. So we'll move on down. Oh, and I'm sorry, Nathan. I think your mic is still live, so we'll make sure we, we need you there. So we'll move on. Hope Dobbins Brown, followed by Rebecca Crawford. Don't see Hope in the list here. Keep on trekking down the list. Rebecca Crawford, followed by Kathy Visser, followed by Crystal Coat. Rebecca, I do, well, no, it's a different Rebecca, actually. Is there Rebecca Crawford? Doesn't look like it. Okay. Now, I know we got Kathy Visser here.
Yes, hello. My name is Kathy Visser. Are you able to hear me?
We are, Kathy. Go ahead.
Fantastic. Our family is so thankful for the wisdom of the Arizona Legislature and allowing families to have our ESA program and the care that's being taken by the State Board of Education establishing this process that we are now going to have. I was one of the first 75 parents in the ESA program, and currently both my children are recipients. I also help moderate the support groups mentioned before. and I cannot imagine how anyone navigates the ESA program without the help of other parents. The first thing I'm going to address is the FERPA violation. The Office of Civil Rights told ESA parents when our private information was released, ESA is not a school, so we're not covered under FERPA. The ESA program is our school. We have to work closely with the department to run our child's education, just as teachers do in the schools, and our information should be protected. Part of the information that was released was our eligibility categories, which often includes medical diagnoses. Parents obtained information that agreed hostile to the ESA program as far as making a map of our homes and sharing our addresses with people trying to upend the program. Shortly after the release, parents reported suspicious activity outside of their homes and several other security concerns that were very possibly related to the breach of data. It is unconscionable that a large group of our most vulnerable children should not be protected by the largest agency in the state charged to protect their well-being. The next thing I want to address here is class wallet. I and the other parents see a great potential with the implementation of class wallet, but we're having some very challenging issues with the current way class wallet is being implemented. We were told most of the vendors would be added in the marketplace before moving families to the program that need to customize our children's education. Parents are being forced into class wallet even though most of the vendors are not available yet. We were told this would be a portal where you could make, we could make our regular purchases the same way we always have, but there are very few vendors to choose from in the marketplace. Apparently, we can treat it like a purchase order, but that gets to be a very complicated process. And most of those vendors, most of the vendors aren't even signed up that way either. There are several hundred vendors that parents regularly use that have not been added, and parents have had to take it upon ourselves to contact the vendors and try to convince them to sign up. One vendor I personally spoke to is a mom and pop shop, had to spend a great deal of time and money to make their website work with class wallet. Class wallet is not currently set up for us to access the same shopping process on the internet with guardrails, as we were told, and was put out by the superintendent Hoffman when class wallet was adopted. We are, we are going to be denied the ability to purchase from small vendors and local businesses altogether, as the process is now. Allowing a small portion of the funds to be moved to a debit card could alleviate most of this problem. Next, I just want to, oh, I guess my time is up.
Yeah, if you don't mind wrapping up, Kathy, I'm sorry.
Okay. The instability and how the problem, the program's been managed for the last nine years has made this program extremely stressful for parents who already had challenges that people don't understand if they don't have special needs kids. Many have left the program because of the mismanagement by ADE. There's no reason we should be fighting the Arizona Department of Education the way we have since the inception of the program. The reason many of us have stayed is because the abuses have been preferable to what AD allows in the schools towards us and our kids. Thank you so much for the process in determining the procedures. Parents' input for our wonderful program is long overdue, and your presence in the process is welcome. I look forward to working with the Board of Education in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Next, we have Crystal Coate, followed by Christina Tenelli and Matthew Dematte. And I should have made this as a disclosure at the beginning. If I butcher your name, I sincerely apologize, and it's not a personal slight to you. It's just my lack of worldliness and ability to read coherently. So Crystal Coate, are you with us? It does not look like it, but I do want to give a pause here just in case. Okay, what about Christina Tenelli? Look like Christina is with us either. How about Matthew Dematte? Dematte?
I'm here. Do you hear me?
We can indeed, Matthew. Go ahead.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Matthew Dematte. I'm an individual contractor for hire who delivers educational services to children, either in the home or virtually over Zoom. As Fred Rogers said in his speech to Congress in 1969, "I am very much concerned," as I know you are, "about what's being delivered to our children in this country." I taught in special education classrooms for 15 years, and I, like Mr. Rogers, have worked hard to try to assess the inner needs of children. I found that even under the most favorable circumstances, there will always be a minority of students for whom a classroom environment does not represent the most suitable approach. Indeed, for some students whose educational pathways are atypical, the effect is not only ineffective, but detrimental, both academically and psychologically. I remember I was, I was a non-neurotypical boy in a public school with ADHD who couldn't sit still. I heard the buzz of the fluorescent lights and the laughs from my classmates and the shh of the teacher because my spontaneous reactions in feedback couldn't be given because it wasn't time to talk. After a while, I shut down. I gave up. I wasn't feeling validated. I was harassed, bullied. It created lasting effects that I feel even today. For the few environments and educators that honored me in my learning style, I thrived. This contrast and wanting to make a positive difference is what drove me to become a teacher. It's also what made me leave the classroom and become a private contractor. I, our focus must always be on what best facilitates learning for the children in our community. And if there is an alternative to the classroom environment available to us that enables students to make academic progress along with building the confidence and and positive emotion that drives drives it, I think we're obligated to pursue that alternative. And ESA provides parents with the means to find and secure the alternative learning approach that works best for their children. I, I, it's like at a 10% discount over what would normally be spent on a child in a public school, parents can hire individuals like me who can focus on student need and student progress. Instead of cranking out test scores that meter exceed, I want to show students that they matter, that they have the ability to go further than they thought possible. And working as an educational contractor, I can have made that happen. And the visible progress is amazing, not only academically, but emotionally. Students often feel validated like never before because an educator can finally help them to become what they can be. It's what Mr. Rogers wanted. He wanted kids to be all they could be. ESA makes that difference by giving parents access to the educational providers they believe will enable their children to learn most efficiently. We need to preserve educational choice in Arizona. Support the ESA.
Thank you, Matthew. That was almost exactly three minutes. That was impressive. Next up, we have Joy Brownlee, followed by Misha Pierce Byrd and Natalia Smith. Joy, go ahead.
Hi. Hi, this is Joy. Can you hear me?
We can. Yes, go ahead.
Great. My name is Joy Brownlee. I'm a mother to three children on the Empowerment Scholarship, and I am so thankful that you're asking for feedback from families today. We have tried public, private, and charter schools, and none would provide a safe, free-from-harm, research-based, one-on-one instruction or special education service for dyslexia services that my child needs in order to learn. Not every child can learn in a brick-and-mortar school option, no matter how good the school is. However, within four months, using research-based, evidence-driven, one-on-one, or in Gillenham-based instruction that no school in Arizona would provide, my child was able to meet some of her IEP goals in four months that no school had helped her to achieve in four years. Thank you for letting me talk today and for hearing my children's needs. I'm a parent of three children on ESA, but I also have a master's degree in elementary education. And ESA has saved the educational lives of my three children. There are four areas in the rules process I think are critical to get parent feedback on. The first is STEM curriculum instruction and how it's being limited in the handbook and rules that is not accurately represented in the statutes. Definitely denying and disallowing the purchase of technology that's multifunctional, general technology like television, cell phones, digital cameras, I completely understand. But ESA should not have rules that deny the ability to purchase curriculum in STEM-related field simply because it contains technology as a component necessary to complete the curriculum. We, after all, as educators, are supposed to be allowing for next-generation science standards, and the rules and the handbooks need to allow for that growth and potential in our children, who, by the way, are not typical kids. How can a classroom educate a child who reads at a third-grade level and is bullied and made fun of and oftentimes physically harmed because of that? But they can actually do STEM at an 11th-grade level if given the opportunity. We, as parents and educators, are overturning every single rock available to find curriculum that we can tailor, sometimes writing the lessons ourselves, using curriculum that we buy and purchase that goes with those items. And STEM curriculum should never be limited in the handbook or rules as long as it is providing and meeting an educational goal that will allow the student to achieve what they need to in their education. The second area is the use of audits. Once an expense report is submitted, it should be reviewed in the same year, using the same handbook, and done. In additional, for class wallet, I am very concerned. Most students are not having one expense report a month with one item. Kids with special needs sometimes use curriculum from 75 different vendors on one quarter because we will not stop finding every avenue possible to educate our children with special and diverse and different needs. We should be allowed to find the preferred vendor of choice that our children need using ESA. Please provide a class wallet option that allows us to purchase using a card so that we can tie curriculum that our children need. Thank you again for listening. Thank you for this program, which has truly saved the educational lives of children like mine.
Thank you, Joy. Next, we have Misha Pierce Byrd and Natalia Smith, followed by Juanita Mucha. I do not think that we have Misha Pierce Byrd or Natalia Smith on, but I do want to give a quick pause to see if they are. I don't think so. So I think that means we're gonna move on to Juanita Mucha, and this will be our last speaker before we take our one o'clock break. So Juanita, go ahead.
Great. Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can. Yes.
Awesome. Good afternoon. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for the opportunity to comment. We're excited to be part of ESA. This is our first year. Our son is on the spectrum and was really falling behind in public school. He's been in public school since he was three years old, and every year we've seen a decline. And we heard about this program, and we're so excited to start it. And I just wanted to thank you so much. It's been, it's, we hope it's going to be a real blessing for us. I feel like it is from all we've heard from other families that are in it. They're just so, so supportive of it. And we're relieved to have the opportunity to tailor our son's education because it's been a real struggle. He was starting to feel like he wasn't fitting in in public school, and he's only, he was seven years old, and he already felt different and felt like they were, you know, being taken out of school, taken out to do special services. It was really impacting his, his whole person, you know, just not feeling like he was part of the class, like other kids, other children. So we're just so happy. That's, that's basically all I wanted to say was thank you for this program and allowing us to comment, and I'm happy to hear all the other parents that have commented. It's been so helpful for me and to know that we have other advocates and support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Juanita. So it is one o'clock on the dot, so we're gonna take our one o'clock break right now. Actually, over here, so we have that, and then we'll also make sure we hold ourselves accountable here with the timing and set that for five minutes. So we'll take a brief five-minute break here, and we'll come back around 1:05. You don't have to log off. You can just hang out here. You won't hear from us, though, for five minutes as we kind of catch up with the list where we're at and take a bit of a break, but we'll see you back here while you'll hear us in about four minutes and 40 seconds. So, and thank you, by the way, for those who've provided comments so far. We really do appreciate it, and if you, if you're sticking around, we also appreciate that, too. When we come back, we're gonna go first to Kayla, because I know you're here, and then we'll go down the list of other folks who weren't, who we missed. So Kayla, you'll be first up, followed by Dominique Judge, if you're available, Harish Talanki, Jay Galushka, Emily Smith, I think Emily is here, Schweta Chopra, Hope Dobbins Brown, Rebecca Crawford, Crystal Coate, Christina Tenelli, Misha Pierce Byrd, and Natalia Smith, and then we'll, we'll go back to where we were on the 26th speaker. So thank you, and we'll see you back here in about four minutes. Okay, everyone, our five-minute break is now up, so we will get back to where we Okay, everyone, our five-minute break is now up, so we will get back to where we were. Fix our line here. Okay, so we're gonna go back to the top of the list here where we left off. So that's Kayla. And we had some others here who look like still haven't joined us, but I'll probably read off their names just in case. So. Kayla, once you get unmuted and it looks like we're still working on that, then you'll have an opportunity to. Start providing your comments. So Kayla, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. I'm glad we got this fixed. Thank you so much. Alright, my name is Kayla Svedine and I am an ESA mom. And I would like to talk about um, the, the issues in the handbook. A couple of people have touched on it already with certain items being approved. Specifically, I want to talk about the memberships. Um, annual memberships versus monthly memberships. Most parents that are using annual memberships do so because, one, it's a program that works well for their kids. And also because it saves money. Just because we have. Our children's accounts that has this money loaded onto it doesn't mean that we are out there, you know, blowing our money on whatever. We, we want to save as much of that as possible. It's, it's not only. Frugal and respectful. It's a good, it shows that we're, we're good stewards of this money. When there are rules that change back and forth from year to year about. Like the annual memberships, for instance, they're not going to be allowed this coming year based on what the handbook currently says. Whereas last year it was. These annual memberships can save a parent. Anywhere from ten to thirty percent on what they're going to pay over that year. My daughter, for instance, I wanted to, I was looking at doing the Rosetta Stone. Language packs this coming year. Every, if, if you pay monthly, you have to pay three months at a time, which is allowed, but it's only one language. And that might be okay for some children, but again, children in the ESA programs are. Are individuals and have individual strengths and weaknesses and my daughter is on her way to being a polyglot. She has been teaching herself Chinese since she was about five. She has started learning Hawaiian and will be starting to learn Hindi coming up. This next school year as well. She also wants, she wants to continue with Chinese and Hawaiian alongside her Hindi. And the unlimited languages option saves a lot of money in the Rosetta Stone. Instead of eleven ninety-nine per month. It's, um, you get unlimited languages, so not just the one. At annually, it's just under fifteen, but they also have a two-year option and a lifetime option. Now, if I were to go out and purchase the actual Rosetta Stone physical curriculum, I would own that. We would own that forever, lifetime. But if I want that product digitally, I'm not able to access it digitally as a lifetime product, even though it would save literally hundreds and hundreds of dollars. And this isn't the only example. Other times, um, memberships like that. We're not allowed to purchase these annual subscriptions and having these rules restrict. Costs more money, which is more tax money that is being wasted when we're spending it on our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla. So going down the rest of the list there. We have, and I'm, I'm just gonna read off their names, cause we can see who's attendees. But it may not be in there. So from what I'm seeing here. These folks signed up but are not there. So Dominic Judge, Harish Talanki, Jake Alushka. But I do think we have Emily Smith available. So Emily, if you're ready to go, you may proceed.
Can you hear me?
We can, yeah.
Awesome. Hey, my name is Emily Smith. I have three special needs children. I have a nine-year-old that has that total needs care with cerebral palsy, non-verbal G2 fed. I have a nine-year-old son with extreme ADHD and mental health problems. And a seven-year-old daughter that is twice exceptional with ADHD. Public school was never the answer for my children due to their needs. My son was very behind in school when I pulled him out. He needs consistent one-on-one attention. The public school just cannot give that to him, but I can. My daughter with cerebral palsy was not able to get the amount of therapy she requires in public school, only one and a half hours per week. With ESA, we, and DDD, we have a parent professional to help me educate her and we have eight hours of therapy per week. My daughter that is twice exceptional is able to learn at her own fast pace. We are able to make sure she gets the, um, get her basics in and then she can go above and beyond on things that interest her. She loves to soak up information. ESA also gives my children the opportunity to do social things with friends like karate, swimming, dancing, et cetera. I feel like my kids are very well-rounded children, getting the needs, their needs met thanks to ESA. I'm so thankful for the program. My one big concern is class wallet. I am in support of class wallet, but I'm terrified of it at the same time. My concern is there's not enough vendors on class wallet to make sure that my children get the well-rounded education that they need and currently have. I feel like my children will miss out on some valuable teaching materials. I have spent some time emailing vendors, asking them to apply for class wallet. Not many have responded back, however, the ones that have stated that they're not interested in class wallet at the moment. One example is Epic. It is a reading program for my daughter and that my daughter spends hours and hours on. She loves Epic. When the prescription runs out, we will not personally be able to afford things like this. Another program that we use is Monarch. It is an online program for students that are in third to twelfth grade. My daughter is in second grade, but she's doing a third grade program and my son is going into fourth grade with it. I have really liked this program for my children and was planning on keeping it for as long as they are doing well in it. I'm afraid that once we're in class wallet, it will disrupt their, their educational progress. I know that there is a debit card option for this for class wallet. A debit card would solve this problem for us. It would help us make the transition easier and better for families like my own. Please consider this for this wonderful program. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. We also have, and again, I'll just read off the names for the folks who it looks like are not on the list. Schweta Chopra, Hope Dobbins Brown, who I know we're trying to get a hold of. Rebecca Crawford, Crystal Coe, Christina Tonelli, Misha Pierce Bird and Natalia Smith. Uh, so we'll, we'll probably end up circling back to you guys again at our next break and also at the end of the meeting. For now, we'll keep moving down our current list, which starts with Laura Leon. Followed by Jill Fifeield and Brenda Johnson. I do not see either or any of those three on our list here. So we'll keep moving on to Victoria Sandals, Mary Ann Scott and Stacy Widener. Okay, it doesn't look like we have Victoria Sandals, Mary Ann Scott or Stacy Widener either. So that takes us to April Adams, followed by Lynn Rubenstein and Jessica Bitzui. Oh wait, I'm sorry. I think I, looks like Mary Ann Scott is there. Mary Ann, is that you?
Yes, it is.
Okay, there we go. Sorry, I didn't wanna jump past you too quick. So you may proceed with three minutes on your public comment.
Okay, I just wanna say that I've been joined with you for the, the longest time and then you said I wasn't on here and I was like, oh, no, no, I'm on here. And then I clicked unmute on my end and then you saw me. I don't know if that's a similar problem that other people are having, but I just wanted to share that.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you for letting me walk into it.
Yeah, um, I first could probably just sit down and say amen. Um, almost everybody has made similar comments as mine, but since I prepared my remarks, I will go ahead and, and start. Again, my name is Mary Ann Scott. I just first want to thank you to those who organized this conversation. I appreciate this idea of collaboration between those who use the ESA program and then those who make decisions. Most times, process and implementation only become better after analyzing the application of the program. And then fine-tuning it for better outcomes. So thank you again for listening to us. Who are using the ESA program to hopefully see where some fine-tuning is still needed. Um, I want all to know that this ESA option to educate my children truly saved my family. My oldest has significant disabilities and she attended our public school through her ninth grade year. The emotional energy used during those nine years were draining to myself and my family. So many years were spent of advocating and begging and pleading for her to be educated and more importantly, even wanted. And to be invited to her whole school community, to be a part of and not arrive and be shuffled from here to there. ESA has opened up our world to educational opportunities never to be found in the public school setting. To find these though is much work since I live in rural Arizona. I have to go find individuals with correct credentials. They're not big businesses I can Google to choose from. Just sitting her at a desk in an online format and purchasing curriculums that way is not an option for her, given her significance of her disabilities. And her intellectual capacity. Um, please, my, one of the, the concerns that I have heavily is regarding the Bank of America card. And please don't take it away as a payment option. Most of my daughter's teachers only have her as a client. For them to go through the whole process to be added to class wallet would not benefit them and she would lose most of her instructional day. I would also like to propose that a group of parents who use the ESA program on the daily. Be invited to your decision collaboration team as a regular. A legitimate committee to be formed where this conversation happening right now is the norm, not just a special moment in time. That a committee including family ESA users be a regular participant, participant at the ESA decision-making table. When the provided statutes are taken and then tweaked to personalize it to our state. Having parents who use the program add their insight would truly be invaluable. It may be found not much change needs to occur from the existing statutes already in place. I do applaud Arizona to be at the forefront of realizing the diverse educational needs in our state and bringing ESA here. I have friends and family that live across our nation and envy of how my children can be educated articulated often to me. In my last few moments, these remarks are not prepared, but I just have to say that I'm tired, like I'm bone tired. Every moment since my daughter's been born, I've had to fight and advocate and learn system after system after system and become an expert. And take trainings and go to conferences to try to figure out how to get my daughter what she really is federally mandated and rights that should already be hers. And I just ask that people who are making decisions. Later, hear my words right now that this ESA system can be more streamlined. And be a more user-friendly to those who are trying to navigate it. And just remember that we're tired and we just want best for our kids. And at the same time, I'm very, very thankful for this ESA program that's here for my children in the state of Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. And it turns out. You were there and were available to view on the attendees that whole time. That was just a user error on my part, so I apologize for that. But we did circle back and those other folks we read off did confirm that. They are still not available, but again, we'll circle back after our next break to make sure they still have another opportunity. So that means right now we have April Adams, followed by Lynn Rubenstein and Jessica Bitzui. So April, you may take it away. Now.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank y'all for your time today. I have three amazing children on the ESA and we, a nine-year-old and twin three-year-olds. We use a hodgepodge of therapy and tutors and school options to meet our kids' needs. And the ESA is so important to our family that it is the only reason that we live in the state of Arizona. Because I sure would like to live on the coast in Florida. And we're very grateful for the program and as it allows us to educate our children. In March, the state of Arizona closed their schools. And families everywhere were crying, cause they weren't sure that, um, about what to do. And our education continued seamlessly. My son, who is nine, he was eight at the time, but. He managed to finish his, his study of AP World History. That he was taking with his tutor and he managed to finish up the third grade. And finish a fourth grade math and a few other goals that he had set for himself seamlessly without any interruption. Because of ESA. So we were able to finish out our school year with APLUM. I, I wanna address just a few points that I would like to add. There needs to be a rule that protects our data verbatim. Our data was released with our children's diagnoses in January, along with our awards and various other information about. These families and with a simple Google, if you had my name, you were able to ascertain where I live. And where the kids that I have that are special needs live. We received a half-hearted apology from SBI Hoffman that, that she did not even bother to sign. And after months of digging, we had very little recourse. It wasn't OCR's job, nor was it purpose. That was batted back around and ultimately, the data of Arizona's most vulnerable children was released. To, to reporters and a group that used the information that they got from the Department of Education. To try to get an initiative on the ballot that would further hurt our children. I also wanna discuss that in the Auditor's General Report that was released in April. The, the Auditor's Report was very clear that there was very little fraud within the program. However. When we move over to the class wallet, we will not be allowed to use the debit card option. The debit card option is very important. To some of us like myself who uses a hodgepodge of methodologies to provide a, an excellent education for my kids. For example, my son wants to take a few community college and take a class at ASU. In order to do that for him in the fall, I'm gonna have to get them to agree to get onto class wallet for possibly just for him. I'm gonna have to then go out and hunt around at some of the, the books that on military history that my son likes to, to read. That are not very easily found and that aren't published where a lot of people, I'm gonna have to contact these teeny tiny vendors and ask them to. Please, please get on class wallet so I can buy these books for my son. And while I don't mind doing that kind of work for my son, I do work for my son every day and I do it with a smile. I, I, a debit card option is something that we need as an ESA family for this program to continue working. And continue to help my children be successful. And that is all I have today, except this. Thank you very much for giving us this forum. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, April. Next, we have Lynn Rubenstein, followed by Jessica Bitzui and Christie Lamb. Lynn.
I could have sworn I. See, saw you there.
Catcher, it's Alicia. Um, Lynn is just trying to rejoin us as a panelist. She has an out-of-date Zoom application.
Gotcha. Yeah, Lynn, I see you chatting in the, in the chat box that you're not getting a response. We unfortunately cannot hear you. Lynn. And we have, to the best of our abilities, unmuted you. And there's been a couple of times, by the way, folks, that we've been advised that. Some folks have out-of-date Zooms. That are in need of an update, some sort of software update that Zoom implemented. So if you were prompted for that, we'd probably appreciate if you could. Implement that. Uh, update so that way, you know, we can hear you, okay? So Lynn, unfortunately. Cause we can't hear you. May have to reconnect your microphone. We see your hand raised there. We can also try to get you to call in. We can provide you with the call-in number. And if you just give us the phone number that you use and we can know who you are. So I think we'll ask. Alyssa or someone on staff, you can reach out to Lynn and try to get her hooked up. And we'll circle back to you Lynn as soon as we can. Once you're, once you're up and running, we won't wait till a break. We'll just go right to you once we know you're ready to go. So in the meantime, we'll, we'll get back to you Lynn, don't worry. That means we have Jessica Bitzui followed by Christie Lamb followed by Amanda Bean. I don't think we have Jessica or Christie, but I know we have Amanda. So Amanda, you should be getting prompted here soon to unmute yourself and then you can provide your comments. Okay, Amanda, you ready to go?
This is Amanda. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you crystal clear.
Okay, great. So this is our eighth year in the ESA program. I really want to say thank you for this opportunity that we get to provide some feedback. It's very much appreciated. We live in rural Arizona. We have few educational options in our area, especially for a special needs child. And ESA has truly been a lifeline for our family over these last eight years. One of my biggest concerns with the program over the years has been the fluid interpretation of statute and the narrow definitions the department has adopted for educating our kids. Specifically, the definitions for curriculum manipulative, technology, educational items that are in many public school classrooms are denied for ESA families due to the department requiring formal lesson plans or something formally labeled as a curriculum for each item purchased. For example, STEM or STEAM, which literally means science, technology, engineering, art, math. It shouldn't have to be labeled, this is a curriculum. The precept of STEM is to learn by doing and problem solving, but it's an experiential learning process that includes challenges rather than lesson plans. So many STEM items are not allowed due to this narrow definition the department has for curriculum. Anything labeled as STEM should be allowed for educating our kids. Curriculum is just the course of study. It's the items used for learning. ESA parents sign a contract agreeing to provide an education for our children. And as such, we should be empowered to fully take on that responsibility by writing our own curriculum if we choose. There's nothing in statute saying that it's not allowed, but it is a restriction that the department has added. I would ask for consideration during this rulemaking process of what is required to educate a special needs student on a daily basis. These students make up a majority of this program and the needs can vary greatly, which is why we need latitude within this program. Special needs children often learn best with hands-on practice, but many hands-on learning items are disallowed by the department even though they're not specifically disallowed in statute. As an example, would be educational puzzles, which I would classify as a manipulative that helps illustrate educational topics. My kids have learned a lot of geography and science from puzzles that we have bought out of pocket as I was told by the department that they define manipulative as only being used to illustrate math concepts. This is not in statute and it doesn't seem like ESA children should be limited to using hands-on educational tools only for one subject. Statue disallows the purchase of technology hardware such as computers and laptops. The department has extended the definition of technology to also disallow the purchase of items to teach the subject of technology such as coding, robotics, and again, STEM or STEAM. This puts our ESA students at a disadvantage and it's not in line with the specific statute as it is written. I would ask that the rules include a provision that clearly separates educational items for, that include technology from computer hardware such as PCs and laptops. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amanda. Lynn?
Yeah.
Are we able to circle back to you now?
Yeah.
We can, yes. There we go. I apologize. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I'm not sure what happened with the computer. So I have been a part of the ESA for three years. My daughter's ESA was used only for tuition at a private school. So we were first on the Bank of America card and then class wallet. We were early, early trunked over folks. So this year, my son is being included, who is on the spectrum as well as having ADHD. So I requested to speak today out of total and complete frustration. On June 23rd, I got an email regarding my daughter's school sending me two checks over the first year and the second year that she attended there out of the last three years. So I actually brought that to your guys' attention and I was then told that that wasn't the way to go. And I said, okay, cool. I requested that the school look into it and they said that that's how it was always done with STOs and that's how it was going to be done. So they sent me a couple of checks at the end of the year that reflected an overpayment of tuition. The tuition checks were total of under $500. My daughter's tuition is $13,000. The ESA gave me about $5,000 a year. So not nearly enough to cover tuition, but the tuition is due every month, so I had to manage that the best I could. So the, the check was sent out immediately on the exact same day that I received a suspended notice on my account. The check was sent, you know, through my bank overnight. I sent proof of all of it, but then there was an immediate, I don't know, feeling as though I had done something wrong. I have followed up 41 emails and two weeks later, and the check could not be located on your guys' address. Again, I sent proof of the check, called the bank, hours and hours of communication, questions asked, like, can I pay in a different way? No response. I was dealing with Alicia. My questions go unanswered and then I got terminated from the ESA. I feel like I did everything the school and the ESA told me to do. No communication, frustration, low to no responses to questions. And I'm actually literally afraid to advocate for the curriculum my son needs. I can't get into ESA or class wallet. I have no idea. That's because I was terminated even though I've sent the check twice and requested other ways to pay. My son is very into horticulture. I requested some lights to facilitate his curriculum but was denied without explanation, except it's not approved. I have read the 36-page handbook. I still can't figure out most things. I just have two sentences and I'm done. I've spent countless hours on this. Even on my 40th birthday a few days ago, I sat there dealing with trying to get the check figured out. I have requested to speak to higher authorities and it goes all unanswered. I have added, tried to add my son's piano teacher, which is a Peoria Unified School District certified teacher. And he was told that his application was denied. So at this point, so many things are unclear. I can't get anyone with any authority to give me any answers. I have tried to get the check thing resolved over and over again and I don't feel supported. I feel like we should not have to spend so many hours advocating for our kids and then have to advocate for our kids through the ESA as well, you know? That's it and I yield.
Thank you, Lynn. Next, we have John Clayton followed by Rebecca Cross and Chris Chesron-Woffel.
John? Ladies and gentlemen, this is John Clayton. Good afternoon. Can I be heard?
Yes, proceed.
Excellent. My name is John Clayton. My wife Tammy and I are parents of five children ages 19 to 11, four of whom are special education students and participants in ESA. I advocate directly for these programs to be welcoming and helpful. More to the point, we must advocate also for those who directly nurture the children. Here I make reference to the individual working, quote unquote, "in the trenches and on the front lines with the children" from teachers and guidance counselors at schools to therapists, whether in the school or in the home, all the way through anyone fulfilling a mothering role, including and of course, the most important of all nurturers, mothers themselves. Today, my comments have as their focus two areas of interest for improvement in the newly proposed ESA rules. First, for actions taken in response to suspected fraudulent spending of ESA funds, I would propose that a personalized telephone voice contact to either or both ESA expense submitters, the parents, be done or attempted first in lieu of a threateningly worded letter. This is important because it serves to unite ESA and the parent in cases where some outside fraudster is abusing the credit card instead of driving a wedge between parents and the ESA administration. The use of a personalized phone call or even perhaps a Zoom meeting displays more authentic concern. And in the hopefully rare case of parental fraud, it may just rapidly open up a very helpful two-way avenue of communication. As the old American proverb has it, kindness is the noblest weapon with which to conquer. It is my strong belief that unapproved or disallowed expenses be reimbursed by parents directly into their ESA account so that they are not doubly penalized for missteps. Second, the types of educational therapies should not be limited to certain predefined types. Instead of listing allowed types, a list of disallowed types should be maintained. This has a beneficial effect of future-proofing the system and naturally keeping thoughtful dialogue open and active on this topic of what is not allowed and why. Likewise, credentials for tutoring and therapies should not be limited by field explicitly. Instead, a list of minimum requirements should be provided as an example with liberal allowance for credential equivalences to be not only discussed but easily and quickly adopted. Ladies and gentlemen, once again, my name is John Clayton. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, John. Next, we have Rebecca Cross followed by Chris Chesron-Woffel followed by Michelle Dillard. Rebecca?
This is Rebecca. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Thank you so much for taking the time to get this feedback today. It has been an amazing opportunity to hear what other parents are saying and also to give our own feedback. I have four children that are on the ESA program and this is our third year on the program overall. The program as is has worked really well for us. It has allowed me to customize the education to meet each of my children's individual needs. I've seen them grow academically, educationally, in confidence, all those different areas. My biggest concern today is the change to class wallets. I need to make sure that our children can continue to access individual education they need. And the best way to do this is through the debit card option. I know that reimbursement is listed as an option, however, it is not a true option. For many families, it would be out of reach. You must have the available funds to use your own money and then wait for reimbursement. You have to have a bank account. It requires those things that have never been part of the program before and for families, this may not be a true option. And that is why the debit card is so important. The card would allow my children to continue to access their therapies in classes, purchase items in person and have the best educational opportunities possible. One of my daughters this year discovered a big love of geography. It was through one of the subscription boxes she received and the Bank of America card allowed us to pursue different resources on geography globes and other things from a whole bunch of different vendors. The current class wallet system will not allow her those same type of opportunities. I also want to briefly mention the help desk. When we put in things, questions, asking for approval, we need to get timely answers. I have a question that's just sitting there. I've been assigned to Alicia, but I have not had any movement on it, any response on it. It's regarding something for last quarter's expense reports. And I have no timeline for anything. I'm still waiting for expense report questions from last quarter as I mentioned. I'm waiting for approvals. We just need a timely response that's actually helpful. I don't need someone quoting back the handbook or giving me misinformation. I've been told things weren't allowed that are specifically allowed. So I just asked for those two things that we have the debit card option for class wallet and that the help desk is responded to in a timely and accurate manner. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rebecca. Next, we have Chris Chesron-Woffel followed by Michelle Dillard and Heidi Hales. Chris?
Yes, hi, this is Chris. Can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Chris Chesron-Welfell and I am a very proud and grateful ESA parent. My son is on the autism spectrum and he has some other medical challenges that provide some extra struggle for us. As you've heard today, you really have a lot of strong, determined, seriously committed parents and guardians in these ESA families and I hope you really take that to heart today. Because even though we each have our own individual circumstances, collectively, we are very hardworking and responsible and conscientious people who care deeply about providing the best education possible for our children. Given that you do have this strong base of experienced and knowledgeable parents, I'd like to respectfully request that a strong representation of these parents from a variety of qualifying categories and different educational methods, as you've heard some of today, be regularly included in the development of like the handbook and these policies and things because the perspective that we can provide is really valuable insight to the board and whatever work groups you end up putting together. Oftentimes, I believe that the well-meaning rules have very complicated and negative repercussions. You know, and, and they are not executed in the way they were intended. It forces us to repeatedly ask for permission or interpretation from the ESA office. And then we get these anonymous responses that just quote back the handbook. Well, that's why we contacted you. Because the handbook isn't really clear or it presents a complicated situation. Anyway, my second request is that the board please improve communication overall from the ESA office. Whether it's updates, newsletters, annual or biannual meetings that we once had. Carla Escobar did awesome meetings at the very beginning when I started the ESA program. But I think communication overall just needs to be improved. As for the specific rules, they need to be flexible but give us as parents power to make knowledgeable decisions based on what's best for our child. I'm concerned about this class wallet. I will interject that because I do have some tutors that it's going to be difficult for them to do. And, and I'm very concerned about some of the specifics that deal with special needs students. This isn't the time to really go into all of that, but I welcome this forum that you mentioned for next week and the opportunity for all of us to participate and share those ideas in detail. So thank you so much for your support of this program and the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Chris. Yes, and we'll make sure that we put out information on that forum for exactly that kind of discussion. Next, we have Michelle Dillard followed by Heidi Hales and Glendalese Woodice. And I think neither Michelle Dillard nor Heidi Hales are available. So that means we're going to go down to you, Glendalese, which followed after you up. That'll be Luis Vice after that, followed by Ravini Abagudwar Doni. So, Glendalese, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, hi. My name is Glendalese and first of all, I want to thank you for organizing this hearing. I really appreciate it. I absolutely love this program and it has meant the world to my family. Much of what I wanted to say has already been said. I do have one very different thing that I feel like could be handled differently by the program. Let me explain. I have been homeschooling for the last three years. And as other families, my oldest children attended local public schools. Things weren't going very well, so I decided to enroll them and I put them in a virtual online school, which wasn't ideal, but slightly better. My youngest entered the program at the kindergarten level because we live rurally in a failing school system. From the beginning, he has been receiving an average of about $1,400 more yearly than my other two children. Something that didn't matter at all because I was homeschooling, but due to unforeseeable reasons, I needed to return to work. But I could only afford to pay for my youngest child to go to the nearest private school because my oldest two don't receive enough funds. I began this conversation with the program staff, and they informed me that as a courtesy, my oldest children could unenroll from the program and reapply and would qualify to receive the higher rate of where I live, not Casa Grande where the virtual school was located. But I would lose all of their savings. Problem is that the higher rate wouldn't cover the private school in its totality, which is already a very affordable school compared to most private schools. They would need some of what I had saved for them during the last three years by being very frugal, as most of us know how to do. Sorry, my baby's crying. Can you take her away, Sacre, please? I feel that it may be something to be considered in cases where the higher rate can be given, not to make parents unenroll and reapply and lose their savings. Additionally, I feel that at least a 90-day grace period should be given to all parents who leave the program and send their kids to public school or any other school. In case it doesn't work out, they should be able to return to the program and still have access to their savings. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Luis Vice, followed by Ravini Abe Unawadani, and then Shannon Kempster. And I think it looks like Shannon, you are the only one of those three who are here, so we'll go to you, Shannon.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great. First, I want to express my gratitude for the ESA program and for the board members' time today. My son's disabilities challenged the public school system beyond their resources and abilities in order for him to access the curriculum. This resulted in a denial of faith as well as civil rights violations. ESA saved my son from a path that would have compromised him on a systemic level, ultimately hindering his ability to pursue secondary education, sustainable employment, and independent living. As Dr. Bolts expressed, our children's needs are dynamic and constantly in flux. Due to their not being an ideal fit to meet all academic, social, and skill-based needs, ESA affords families to customize their children's education. Four years ago, my son at six years old could not articulate his thoughts, was verbally unintelligible, could not identify letters, numbers, and became increasingly aggressive in behavior, hurting himself and others due to being a prisoner of his own mind. He was abused and bullied not only by his peers, his entire kindergarten year, but also by his teacher and school administration. Only after I was able to put him into an intensive speech and language therapy via ESA was he able to express his painful experiences that still today is a vivid memory for him. Today, at 10 years old, my son is thriving, finding his natural strengths in academia as well as personal interests, and is most importantly, a happy and competent young man, none of which would be experienced had ESA not saved him. My primary areas of concern are the consistent frivolous and stylistic-based rejections of expense reports and the implementation of class wallet, which currently eliminates a parent's ability to directly pay a vendor on the front end who is not listed on the system. As of right now, it has become the rule versus the exception that my son's expense reports are rejected for either invalid reasons or a complete lack of common sense to look into more detail of the information I've provided. My job is to educate my son, not spend hours of back and forth to get reports approved in what becomes a game of financial keepaway, so to speak. It's also imperative to mention this is an extremely wasteful monetary drain on our state and taxpayers. Second, as Mrs. Visser and Mrs. Scott expressed, class wallet stifles a child's ability to access curriculum from small businesses and individuals best equipped to meet their unique needs. It is crucial that a parent has access to a debit card and is able to pay these people directly if they're not registered as a class wallet-approved professional. I am deeply concerned the village of therapists and professionals I have strategically built to comprehensively meet my son's needs will be damaged and extensively compromised. This would directly affect my son's ability to access education services and supports he requires. The direct damage would cause that this would cause my son would be devastating. Thank you very much for listening to my concerns and feedback. I'm grateful to have the opportunity to express my appreciation for this life-altering program as well as my concerns regarding policies that may hinder its effectiveness.
Thank you, Shannon. Next, we have Christine Emanuel, followed by Jennifer Lusk and Lisa McCarville.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you very well. Go ahead.
So we are grateful, we're very grateful for the ESA program and have committed to educating our children at home so they have a chance at succeeding through their individualized educational program that we have customized for them. Many of my concerns have already been addressed by other parents, so I'll be speaking on a more personal level. In the past 10 quarters on ESA, I have been blessed to be a part of a network of parents that helped me when I was left with unanswered questions by ADE. So thank you to all the wonderful parents that dedicate thousands of hours combined every single month to help other parents and families navigate the ever-changing handbooks. Also, thank you to Ketcher and the State Board of Education team for the positive response and understanding of ESA families in regards to making to benefit ESA families. On class wallet, currently, my ESA recipients do not have access to courses and curriculums that we know works for them. We are one of the families that cannot afford to pay out of pocket for educational materials and therapies. Not only do we not have the personal funds to use from our personal bank accounts, but we would also be put in a position to wait for our family to be reimbursed for an education that my child could otherwise receive by simply adding a bank card option. I have not once misspent their educational funds, but I feel like my children's education will be taking a hit because we cannot afford the reimbursement option. Not to mention that if we were ever able to afford the reimbursement option, we would have to tie our personal bank account to class wallet to get reimbursed, which I don't agree with. I really didn't want to share how much funding my children receive, but at this time, I think it is relevant. Both of my children that will be utilizing ESA will have a combined $34,000 in funding each year. Divide that by four quarters, that's $8,500, which is a big chunk of funds that I would have to come up with to spend out of pocket each quarter on therapies, curriculums, courses that I would have otherwise been able to utilize with a simple bank card option. I see potential with class wallet, so that is why I am asking to be able to utilize a bank card for my children. At this point with class wallet, we will have more funds sitting in class wallet that we cannot utilize. And most disturbing, my children will not have the opportunity at an education that fits their specific needs because of how inflexible class wallet is at this point without the bank card option. At this point, I am understanding that class wallet will help the Arizona Department of Education in regards to invoicing and tracking expenses, but it absolutely does a disservice to families like mine without the bank card option. So I'm asking that this option be afforded to families like ours that need it because flexibility matters for the education of my special needs children and a lot of other ESA families' special needs children. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Next is Jennifer Lusk, followed by Lisa McCarville and Sarah Flank. I think we have Lisa with us. I don't think Jennifer Lusk is with us.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Lisa, yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lisa McCarville, and I am an older ESA mom. I mean, my age is older, but we've been in the program since it started. My son's 19. He is on the spectrum of autism, and he also has some mental health issues that make it very difficult for him to fit into public education. I have a background in journalism and running nonprofits through the ESA. I also have worked as an educator and studied pedagogy. So I gravitated to Montessori before my son's diagnosis and was teaching Montessori, and we just kind of with the ESA used the money to buy Montessori curriculum. Now, in Montessori, which is a 100-year-old school method of pedagogy, the materials in the class, which ESA would consider manipulatives, they are the curriculum that is Maria Montessori saying, follow the child, put down these manipulatives so that the child can see concrete examples of abstract mathematical quotations or hierarchy of numbers. So everything is tactile. You touch it, you manipulate it, you move as you want to. What you're curious in and what you want to learn is where you go, and that is how you learn in Montessori. So my son went through this program. We used the ESA to buy these materials. I always had to show with a Montessori lesson where the curriculum, where the lesson called for the curriculum to validate and to get it passed. It has been very stressful. Sometimes my reports might have each single item I bought. Like if I bought a Montessori bead box, I had to put in maybe 20 pages of documents into my report to validate me buying that bead box. Different lessons of Montessori where she says, go to the cabinet and pick up the bead box, bring it to the table, show the child how to set the beads up, one through 10, on and on. And this is just something that, you know, it has made it so difficult to implement teaching just on the tail end of reporting. It's exhausting to have to every time you purchase something to say, you know, the fear factor that goes in your mind of, I've got to have this receipt, and it's got to look this way, and then I need the documentation to provide to them to show that I'm not committing fraud. Because if I do mess up and do something wrong, it automatically goes to, I am a criminal committing fraud. And if you ever gotten a letter from ESA for a mistake, you know, to be a mother trying to educate my special needs son and to get a letter that's saying that the Attorney General is going after me for fraud is a, you know, you don't get over that. I started this program with no gray hairs, and I'm completely white-headed. Another thing, just to show you how scary it is just to operate in the ESA parameter of following the rules. Three years ago, our house caught on fire, and we were evacuated from our house. Everything, not everything burnt, but everything felt so up with smoke that the insurance came and they took everything out and they cleaned it. I went in as soon as I could, as soon as they put that fire out. I went in and grabbed my file from ESA because I knew that could be audited at any time, and I was in that six-month period where we were not in our home. I was audited twice for things that was like very clear that I was not misspending. And it was just terrifying. It was like, you know, I have to be able to produce to them what I bought, to show it to them, to make sure that I haven't bought something that's illegal. And that's been, that's just been really hard to work in that parameter and to function and to be happy and satisfied when someone's treating you like a criminal all the time. The other problem that I've had with-
Lisa, I'm sorry, but your three months has expired. So if you could conclude your remarks and wrap up, that'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Problem with the new rules. We use a lot of online schooling, and we are unable to access online schools because the requirement to have your son's name on the receipt, the name of the class, you know, they have all these things you have to do. And in automated process, the name on the receipt is going to be the name that's on the card, and that's my name. I can't put my son's name on the receipt because then the card won't go through. So it's little things like this that have made the program very difficult to navigate, very stressful. And I just feel like this is not what it's supposed to be, but why is it this way? Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. So we're almost at 2 o'clock, but what I want to do is we have two speakers that it looks like are ready to go, and then we might have a bit of a gap. So I think what I'd like to do is go to- I think I'd like to go to Coco Lovejoy, followed by Alexa Bloom. And then after Alexa goes, then we'll take our semi at 2 o'clock break. So Coco, if you're there, go ahead.
Hi, guys. Do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Great. Go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to address two things, but now everything changed. So I'm going to just add up to something that's been said. I have the issues with class wallet and the crucial need for a credit card have been addressed very, very good. One thing has not been addressed, as far as I know. Parents were asked by ESA to work for free and promote and advertise class wallet and bring in customers. As far as I know, it's illegal for the government to grant a contract to a business than ask those they rule and govern over to be the moneymakers for this company. They're the very same government selected. Maybe that wasn't the intention, but it looks a whole lot like fascism. Another thing I wanted to address is the curriculum. Curriculum right now is, there's an unreasonable and arbitrary demand by ESA employees for us to show proof we have packaged curriculum that specifically states a supplemental material is required or it cannot be purchased. So what I want to do is an exercise of assuming competence. We are smart, educated parents. I don't see the educational value in wasting money on curriculum written or put together by others only so I can be allowed to buy a great magnifying glass and teach about, I don't know, bugs and life in the backyard, then come inside to do artwork at the table while we talk about what we observed and incorporate our observations in our unit studies. That magnifying glass has the potential to steer the study based on the children's interest that particular day. It can be biology, optics, geometry, physics, history, or inventions. It can even start a fire, then open the door to a lesson on safety. These lessons driven by the children's excitement are the lessons that stick. My point being, parents must be allowed to develop lessons and curriculum and buy items or educational games to incorporate in their teaching. I have another issue to address, which is the help desk. The help desk is very messed up right now. It was one of my most desired features, and it turned out that it's working, we're getting there, but we need a lot more help to be where we're supposed to be. I can send my suggestions via email to you directly if you would like. In the help desk world, it is very atypical that a tech closes a ticket. A help desk must work following these steps. The user submits a ticket. The system replies to the user by sending a generic message that the ticket has been submitted and informs what is the reply policy, 24 to 72 hours, for example. A real person replies to the ticket. At the end of the ticket, there's a link to, if I've solved your problem, click here to close this ticket. If not, reply to this thread without modifying the subject line, just a rough example. User reads the ticket and tries to reproduce the problem or checks if the solution is pertinent to the issue. A, if user is content, user gets to close the ticket. B, if user is not happy or still has questions, he hits reply. Some help desk taking consideration the expectation that if the problem has been solved, most of the people would not close the tickets. So they implement a feature and a timer. If X days passed and user didn't close the ticket, user receives an email informing that his ticket was not replied to for the past X days, and it will be marked as closed satisfactory or variations. User might or might not have a link in this email saying, if you'd like to reopen, click here. So these are a few of the most important things. We needed more than three minutes, but I appreciate your time, and we're looking forward to this. Thank you.
And yes, you can certainly email any comments or feedbacks, especially specifics that don't fit into a three-minute window to that ESAfeedback@azsb.az.gov. So next, before and finally before our break, is Alexa Bloom. Alexa, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. First, I'd like to thank the board for listening to us. In all the years I've been using ESAs and navigating my children's education, I've never felt as heard as I have recently. So truly, thank you for trying to do what's best for our children. My main concern at the moment is losing the tutors and vendors that I fought so hard to find for my kids. It has taken me years to figure out what and who would work best for them. With class wallet, I know that they will be losing almost half of their tutors or educational resources now. This will be devastating for them. Finding tutors and resources that actually work well for complex students is a Herculean feat. We either need a debit card option, as we have now, the ability to choose to stay with B of A and our quarterly audits, or some like creative out-of-the-box thinking to come up with a workable solution. I would also like to address the narrow definition currently being used for curriculum in the handbook. Actual curriculum does not need to resemble a textbook, instructional guide, or written lesson plans. That's simply what it looks like in a typical public school. We should be able to use the manipulatives, books, kits, worksheets, games, crafts, et cetera, that work together to teach our children a specific topic and consider that curriculum. For example, if I'm pulling from various sources to teach astronomy and make it hands-on and interesting, then yes, that constellations matching game is part of my curriculum. Or yes, that 3D solar system model kit is part of my curriculum. So please think about the needs of the populations that ESA serve when defining curriculum in our handbook. If traditional methods worked well for our kids- If traditional methods worked well for our kids, they'd still be in public schools. Uh, again, thank you very much. And I belatedly yield the remainder of my time to Kathy Visser.
Thanks, Alexa. Uh, so it's 2:06. So we're a little bit late on our, our break here, but, uh, I think what we're going to do is take our, our five minute break now and then come back. And it looks like uh, of the folks who we went through, who were not available when we first went through it, it looks like Heidi Hales, you might be logged in now. So, uh, Heidi, after we come back from our break here, you'll be first up along with anybody else who pops in, who we missed. Um, and then after Heidi, um, it looks like we have, uh, Steve Daniels after Heidi, um, along with Allison Hillerker. So, and also Jody Cohen Gordon. So when we come back, we'll do Heidi along with Steve Daniels, Jody Cohen Gordon, and Allison Hillerker. So we'll go on a five minute break here. And again, I'll put the little timer up here and you can stay on. Don't need to log off. Um, and we'll see you back here in five minutes. Thank you. Okay, we are back from our break. Thank you all for providing all these comments and for, um, hanging with us, especially those who are still on the list, still have been hanging with us since the very beginning. Um, we're, we're just about ready to get to you. So in this last hour of this public hearing, we do appreciate the comments. Um, so as I mentioned, uh, we are checking out the attendees list and it looks like Heidi Hales. Uh, we missed you on the first go around and it looks like we're ready to circle back to Heidi. So, um, we'll go to you first and then we'll follow that up with Steve Daniels and Jody Cohen Gordon. Um, so Heidi, let's work on getting you unmuted and then we'll get going again. Okay. Sorry, Heidi, it looks like, uh, you're not muted. I don't know. You might've stepped away as we, uh, uh, requested to unmute you because on Zoom again, you gotta confirm that you do want to be unmuted. But don't worry, Heidi, we'll come back to you if you're listening to us. Um, so that means we'll kick off. So next on the list was Forrest Moriarty along with Amy Bose, but, uh, we'll see either of them here. Um, so that means we'll head on down to, oh, Heidi, are you there?
Yes, I was not hitting the right button. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can hear you. Sorry about that. Yeah, uh, go ahead.
Okay, I apologize. I was at a veterinarian's office all morning, so I have not been able to hear anything other than the last speaker. But, um, I did want to thank you for offering us a chance to, to offer our input today. And, um, I do would just like to probably reiterate what others have already stated that, um, my two newest children on ESA have class wallet. My son has Bank of America. And with Bank of America, it has been such a seamless process. And I really don't mind filling out the expense reports because I can fill them as they come in. But with class wallet, I already have three tutors, including one very, very important vision therapy tutor, which I've hunted for, for months, who have said, no, they're not going to participate in class wallet. One of their biggest complaints was not getting paid for anywhere from three to 10 business days after providing a service. And I have six children in my home, three of them on ESA, um, children with special needs. And for me to, right now, if we don't have a debit card option for class wallet, it's going to just turn my household into more chaos because right now, when I go to pay a tutor, as soon as that session is over, I can pay with the B of A card, like through PayPal, and I instantly get an email. I know they're paid. They know they're paid. We're good. We move on. And yet with class wallet, that doesn't seem like that's going to be an option. I also was gonna question why, I don't know of anybody else that says, here, your, your account is good wherever I work, whoever I work with on like July 1st, but nothing is funded until the 15th through the 30th. And so I contacted ESA and said, can I, actually I've heard I can do reimbursement with class wallet. Can I pay? And worry about getting reimbursed so that these people can provide the services and we're not getting consistent replies. One ESA worker will say, oh, absolutely. This is how you apply for reimbursement. The email reply I got was, no, absolutely. There is no reimbursement whether class wallet or Bank of America. So I think that we need better training for the ESA workers so that we can all get consistent replies across the board. And then the last thing that I wanted to address was, um, what one of the last speakers addressed is as far as educational games with children with special needs, there are so many times when we need to have an educational game included as part of curriculum. But ESA tends to see, oh, unless it says curriculum on it like a textbook, then they don't want to recognize that as curriculum and they will disallow that expense when many times it is something that our children could greatly benefit from. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. So now we'll go to Steve Daniels, followed by Jody Cohen Gordon and Allison Hillerker. Steve, you should be getting a, a request to unmute soon. Steve, if you can hear us, you are next up and put in a request to unmute you. But you do have to check the box that says that you want to be unmuted. But if you can't, uh, get to your computer right now or preoccupied, that's okay. We'll come back to you. Um, so that means next up, uh, we have Jody Cohen Gordon. Jody, are you with us?
Yeah. Hi, can you hear me?
You can. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Um, hi, um, thank you for letting us share our viewpoints. Um, we're on our, going into our third year of having the ESA for my son. Um, and we're so really appreciative of it, um, because it's proven invaluable to his success. Now, he had attended public charter schools for a few years throughout his schooling and it did not work for us. I tried special ed with him, um, in frustration and I eventually had to pull him and thank God that I got the, um, ESA, which allows for school choice and tutoring, one-on-one tutoring. Um, and he recently completed a private program and one-on-one tutoring and had the highest grade ever in his education. Um, and it brings me to tears. He's going into high school and I'm actually nervous, but also excited because I have the ESA as the security blanket. But there are some issues that are confusing. There's restrictions. They, they feel like threats, um, inconsistencies, discrepancies. And it honestly feels like a maze. And I have my own business, a small business, and do major hands-on parenting with my husband and it's, it's hard. Uh, the main, one of the main issues is the receipts. There's consistencies on what's allowed and what's not allowed. So there needs to be more clarification on this. Um, ESA training, which someone just mentioned, um, you know, I go through yearly training, a lot of yearly training to review. And I think that's something that, you know, something like continuing education, I think would be a really good option and make sure that everybody is on the same page. Uh, more clarity and consistency is needed between the handbook and ESA employees' answers. I've emailed and I have gotten different answers for the same question. I got three different answers and you know, that's just ridiculous to have that. Um, and also feedback from parents, particularly on a quarterly basis, like maybe a short survey with yes or no answers. Um, I think it would be helpful to have, uh, you know, on your page, have a link with new and updating information and let us know when it's done. Uh, the more clarity you have for parents, the less questions that we have, which obviously saves time and money. I, I'm very appreciative for the ESA and I'm also very appreciative to have the opportunity to share. Um, and the parents that have been helpful, I'm beyond grateful. Um, and I want to thank you again for your attention to these materials. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. And thank you for making, um, putting this together. Um, this is a long, uh, day and I really appreciate being a part of it. Thank you. I will mute.
Thank you, Jody. Thank you for your time. Uh, next is Allison Hillerker, followed by Stanley Holt and Stacy Burke. Allison?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
All right, wonderful. All right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Allison Hillerker. I'm an ESA parent. My preschool daughter just finished up her first quarter on the program. She has multiple disabilities, including partial blindness and autism. I want to talk today about accessibility. It's not just kids with IEPs and 504 plans who have disabilities. Parents too have disabilities. I am a parent of a student on the ESA program and I am disabled. I am blind. I access my computer and ESA-related materials using assistive technology called a screen reader. In order for my tech to work, people creating websites and portals and other documentation for the program need to follow accessibility guidelines. These guidelines aren't difficult. They're not costly, but they are specific. ESA seems not to follow Web Content Accessibility Guidelines, WCAG, or any other guidelines related to accessibility that exist. During the months that my daughter has been on the ESA program, I that not only does ESA not seem to follow the guidelines, they don't seem to have a plan for doing anything to change this going forward. Even though having a blind parent is one of the criterion that could qualify a child for ESA, they still don't seem to have a plan for addressing accessibility. While the application process and the expense reporting portal do seem to be accessible, and I've been able to access those, other aspects of the program, such as the help desk portal, the contract signature process, those two things were not accessible to me as a blind parent. When I contact ESA staff to ask about accessibility of these platforms, I was told that accessibility was a feature that has not been implemented yet. Even though, as I understand it, following the Americans with Disabilities Act and Section 508 are not optional features. I've gone round and round with ESA staff trying to work out different accommodations and workarounds and Band-Aid fixes to the different accessibility issues I've encountered. Every time I, I need to do something new, like sign a contract or write to the help desk portal, I have to start the advocacy process with staff over again. It's very cumbersome and tedious and not efficient. I ended up only using a small percentage of my daughter's available funding because I couldn't access the help desk portal to get my questions answered. When I learned that my family will be having to move to class wallet, I was told by staff that they didn't know if class wallet was accessible or not. They told me to contact the class wallet myself and find out if it was accessible. But does it make sense for an, does it make sense that an individual parent should be in charge of their own accessibility and contacting this vendor and using my free labor to determine whether or not I can access this program at all? Instead, I dig some, did some digging and I found out that the RFP, I checked the RFP that, that resulted in ESA adopting class wallet, that RFP did also not seem to have mentioned accessibility. My question is, why is the Department of Education not being inclusive of parents with disabilities? We need a plan that requires accessibility for parents to be included in every level of the program. A question, the question of access should not come up only when an individual parent asks for it. A question, the question of access should not come up only when an individual parent asks for it. It needs to be, it needs to be considered as a routine part of the program implementation, particularly before new procedures and platforms are adopted. I'm supportive of the transition to Class Wallet in theory. But whether I'm supportive or not, doesn't matter if my family can't use it. If accessibility is not being considered, families like mine are being discriminated against and my daughter may not be able to participate in the program, even though she qualifies. I would like to see there to be, for ESA to have a written policy around accessibility and also written procedures that ensure that platforms, documents, websites, and processes are all accessible following standard accessibility guidelines and Section 508. Thank you for allowing me to speak today and thank you for allowing my family to participate in the program.
Thank you, Allison. Next is Stanley Holt, followed by Stacy Burke and Karia Perez.
Yep, this is Stanley Holt. Can you hear me okay?
We can, go ahead.
Great. Ladies and gentlemen, we've been utilizing ESA funds for our son for two years now and just started the third year. He has thrived into this program as he was and is unable to attend public or private school. Private school is not an option as there is none in our small town to meet his needs. With these restrictions, he is home educated. ESA has made this exponentially more feasible and ensured he is thriving with a quality education. And I'm going to go ahead and pile on the Class Wallet bandwagon. It was a long process to find the curriculum and systems to best fit his needs. With the change to using Class Wallet, we are faced with the possibility of a severe interruption in his education if we have to seek out other alternatives. Class Wallet is created for schools to use, not for a program like ESA using a vast variety of vendors with many customers. Class Wallet's invasive policies require access to the vendor's banking information, including account and routing numbers. This applies to private tutors and teachers, as well as many of whom are already expressing discomfort with this policy. Several large respected vendors are now no longer accessible to ESA students that currently use them because the vendors will not agree to Class Wallet's policies. The only option given for the vendor limitation to ESA recipients is to pay out of pocket and then file for reimbursement. Many families are not in a financial situation where they can afford the out-of-pocket expense and then wait for a government entity for reimbursement. That is not within the spirit or intention of the legislation for how ESA should work. Fortunately, Class Wallet has built in the option for a debit card, which is not prohibited under the statutes and is how ESA funds were previously administered. This should be an alternative for those popular vendors. I don't think it is feasible to expect large and respected curriculum vendors to change their business model for a very small percentage of students in one state. Use of a debit card is much simpler for recipients and vendors. Unfortunately, ESA is denying any, or denying this option citing that it is too often and too open for fraudulent use. But this is true of any system that provides recipients with any kind of debit card. Fraud can and has been successfully rooted out and rectified through the periodic audits conducted of recipients. Ultimately, honest families should not be punished for the rare unlawful actions of very few or the fraudulent use from hacking that is out of their control. Finally, it would be best for ESA to assume good intentions first. Parents of special needs students are not inherently deceitful. When it comes to expense reports, requests for approval, or complications with disallowed expenses, please assume the parents are not intending to be dishonest and are not trying to abuse a system. We're all trying our best to educate our unique kids while also managing the logistics that come with a complex child. Responses to requests could be handled with kindness and clarity instead of referring back to confusing wording in a handbook. Rejected expense reports should be addressed as if it was an honest mistake or misunderstanding and not an intentional abuse of the system and handled with guidance and assistance to rectify the mistake because it is a complex system. We're extremely grateful for the ESA program and the opportunities it has afforded our son. Thank you for consideration and care in moving the ESA program forward.
Thank you, Stanley.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Stacy Burke, followed by Karia Perez, followed by Tori Smock, followed by Matt Beinenberg. And I believe that we do not have Stacy Burke, Karia Perez, or Tori Smock with us. Which means we're going all the way down to Matt Beinenberg. Matt, are you with us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can, yeah, go ahead.
Great. Good afternoon. I'm Matt Beinenberg, Education Policy Director at the Goldwater Institute. I'd like to thank the State Board and the staff for the thoughtful process that you've undertaken to develop the ESA program rules, especially for convening opportunities like today and the survey efforts that you guys have organized for parents to contribute to that process. So the sake of brevity, I'll try to keep this quick, really just simply echo some of the sentiments that have been shared already. And request that the rulemaking process continues to prioritize within statute, the needs of the parents and the children participating in the program. As has been mentioned, I believe, the Otter General found that nearly a quarter of customer service calls between ADD and ESA parents have involved staff providing quote poor quality information, including giving incorrect guidance about what items constitute allowable expenses. So in light of that, we would strongly encourage the board to ensure protections for parents who may in good faith struggle to navigate the program's rules. In particular, for example, for parents who repay ESA expenses that are deemed disallowed, but which were clearly made in good faith, that they have the opportunity to repay those funds and have those amounts credited back to their ESA account, rather than being punished with paying twice for the item, once out of pocket and once out of the ESA account. So again, thanks very much to members and staff to catcher and everyone else who's been working for the thoughtful consideration that you're giving to the program and to the students and families that it serves.
Thank you, Matt. Next is Vanessa DiCarlo, followed by Jenny Young and Mara Gosack. So Vanessa?
Yes, I'm unmuted?
You are unmuted, yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Vanessa DiCarlo. I have three daughters on ESA who all have disabilities. And we've participated in the ESA program for several years. I'm also a professional and have worked in the area of disability for, for 15 years as an expert witness and worked for both public and private schools, consulting and developing, supporting access to general education curriculum for students with disabilities. So curriculum is my area of expertise and also access to general education curriculum, as well as integrating technologies. So coming from that perspective, as I look forward and many of the students with disabilities are needing to access ESA now, particularly because they can't attend in-person classes, I have great concern for the families of children that may not have access to technology. You know, in the past, we've really viewed technology as being something that isn't part of curriculum and is something external. But now we're seeing, you know, schools giving laptops and iPads to, to children so that they actually can access their learning with so many children moving to virtual learning, especially with those kids with underlying immune issues and with disabilities. I really think that needs to be really thoughtfully considered, how that may look for the ESA program in the future. In the past, we really looked at technology as being a really expensive solution. But now I look at the cost of technology and it's equivalent to something that would be a curriculum. You know, so you can get a, you know, a Chromebook for $300, you know, and iPad. So I just really think that should be thought, thought about, as well as when we are purchasing educational subscriptions. It's, there's a lot of, it feels like over restriction around, around when we deem what is approved, approved expense and not approved expense. So for example, I could approve a package that I would have a very specific link that I could send to my daughter versus having to open the link herself. So two various options that may or may not be approved. I think in general, also how I have learned the ESA program, the manual is very difficult for me to navigate. And so I think it's really critical that there is a lot of transparency, even with my background knowledge and understanding technology and curriculum, evaluating curriculum for schools. I find the only way for me to understand the handbook was to go to other ESA parents, read all of the files, read all of the denials, read all of the approvals. And I have spent significant time and energy doing this, so much so that when it comes time for submitting the reports, I'm so stressed, my hair is falling out. It's, it's that level. And I am so incredibly appreciative for the program. I just would like to have some sort of situation that we could work together instead of in a silo, because I believe that ESA school, ESA staff is doing their very best. But understanding from our perspective, what we understand in regards to the handbook will create a lot of transparency and cooperation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vanessa. So we have, we have about nine left that are listed, looking at our, looking at our attendees. It looks like there's a few here who are not available, so I'll probably try to read off here who is available, it looks like. Tonya Reiner, though I know Tanya, I'm sorry, Tanya. I know Tanya, you might have not been available, but you were going to stay logged in, but we'll, we'll potentially go to you first. Followed by Carrie Lynn Wenger, followed by Amanda Adams, followed by Lisa Shields, and then concluding with Steve Daniels. And then of course, we'll, we'll double check everybody else to make sure we didn't miss anybody. So Tanya, are you, are you back with us yet? Doesn't seem like it, but we'll give you a shot. Okay, so Tanya, we'll come back to you. Carrie Lynn Wenger, how about you? Are you, you with us and ready to speak?
Yes, I'm here.
Great.
Can you hear me?
We can, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Like all the other parents, thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us. And I also, I just really am grateful for this program. I have a child who has special needs and we've been here the past year. This is our first year. And there are some, obviously some opportunities, but my biggest one is communication. I feel like that has been one of the most challenging things, whether it's doing expense reports and getting things back and just clarity. And so, and most recently, when I sent an email, I feel like there's a lot of reactionary part on the communication. For example, I just sent an email last week and I got an email like, oh, you need to use the Help Desk. It was a new thing that I had no idea that this had changed. So I'm glad that after I sent my email trying to get a curriculum approval, now I have to go submit this Help Desk. So my question, a couple of questions there. One is like, what should ESA parents do when they do not get a timely response or any response from the ESA team via the Help Desk, since the email and the telephone appear to be no longer options for communicating? So one, I think what I'd like to know is, in the rules, if they could put in the handbook from your year, this is the main way of communicating. This is how, you know, and the guidelines to do that. And also, you know, they need to have straightforward guidelines of what's expected, timeframes that are given, that it would allow the ESA parents to know how to effectively communicate and when we should follow up for questions or not answered in a timely manner. We just need more transparent, effective communication. And I know Ms. Lovejoy had also hit on this. For example, and this has just only been a week, but still, I submitted, went through the Help Desk and submitted for curriculum approval. You know, we're switching in the year and checked it, you know, it's my responsibility, according to their email, to check it where I'm at. And even as of this morning, so it's been a week, still unassigned, no due date. I just have no clue if they, if ESA says like, you know what, I need, give us 72 hours. If there were some procedures so that we'd know, because I just sit out here wondering. And then that worries me when time comes, if there's an issue with expense reports or, you know, justification, because I think all of us have been thinking that unintentionally misuse funds at some point. You know, I just want to know what are the guidelines? And also, most importantly too, if I'm not getting answered from the Help Desk, where do I go next? Because right now I just sit still unanswered and not a clue when something will be addressed. And I, and of course, everything's put on hold for my child and other things till that is resolved. So I really appreciate the time. Thank you for this forum and I'll take care.
Thank you, Carrie Lynn, you too. Next is Amanda Adams, followed by Lisa Shields, and finally Steve Daniels. So Amanda Adams, are you, are you with us?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yep, go ahead.
All right, thank you. So I am grateful for your time and willingness to listen to families in this program today. We are actually brand new to this program. My son is heading into kindergarten. And I am just so, so grateful for this program because as we began exploring school options for him back in January, we were realizing that nothing in the public school, even with the help and talking to his preschool teachers that were in the public school system, that there just wasn't a good option for him. He just doesn't fall into any of the boxes that, in the way that the educational and the special educational systems are set up in the public school. And we also talked to a few charters and just found that, that none of them were able to meet his needs. And so that's how we found ourselves applying for the ESA program. We were really blessed with the special education program through the public school system. They were a fantastic resource for us and we, we loved them. But as we've moved forward and have been approved for ESA and I've started going over the handbook and going over the, the Class Wallet system and the things like that, it's becoming pretty apparent that the ESA program isn't nearly as flexible as you would hope that it would be as a special needs parent. My son is autistic and has epilepsy. For two years, the seizures robbed him of almost any progression. And so he functions right now at about a three-year-old level. And which means that a lot of his learning at this point is going to need to still be extremely play-based. And that's what we found that we loved so much about the public school classroom with the preschool, that he was able to, they were able to use all kinds of things like manipulatives, games, equipment for gross motor skills, sensory resources, different technologies like their smart board and, and therapies that became a part of his everyday education. Many of these items are not seemingly approved through Class Wallet or seemingly approved through the handbook and are harder to get approval for. Curriculum has a very defined kind of subset of rules that don't really apply to a lot of what we know to, to be best for children who are learning, especially up to the age of eight in early childhood development models. And so I'm also concerned with the accessibility of Class Wallet. It seems that many of the vendors and the, and the curriculum options that I have leaned towards things like Blossom and Root, which is a nature-based program and stuff, things like that, that are these smaller vendors and these smaller companies, they, they aren't as easily able to navigate the Class Wallet system. And, and so I, I would like to see that if we're using Class Wallet, as many have mentioned, that debit card option, but also to see that Class Wallet is also doing its due diligence, is being asked to provide a service to reach out to these vendors that parents maybe submit to them and say, this is a vendor we want. That they're the ones who pursue this and help make this easier for our vendors so that this system can be more easily utilized by parents. This should not be on the parents, this should not be our, our job. Our job of managing our children's education with all these special and differing needs is already difficult enough. And so I'd really like to see that occur through Class Wallet and through their programming, that this is a system that we're paying for, to use as a state, then this is something that they should be doing to accommodate those of us that have to utilize this system. I just once again want to really say that I appreciate the flexibility that ESA does provide, but believe that, looking at things, that it could be much more flexible in the way that allows us to help our children learn and succeed. And, and I'd really like to see that flexibility extended. And I thank you for your time again today.
Thank you, Amanda. Next is Lisa Shields, followed by Steve Daniels. And we just got word that Karia Perez is back with us. So Lisa, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
All right. First of all, I know it's been a long day, so I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm the mom of two and we're a new ESA family this year. Both of my boys are autistic and both have sensory processing disorders, among other challenges. They've been with the public school system since priority preschool and have required extensive support, including one-on-one aids, multiple sensory breaks throughout the day, access to the resource room and a variety of sensory tools. And both were pulled out of the classroom for speech and social skills group. After seeing the new public school model resulting from coronavirus, I realized public school is no longer able to safely and effectively meet the unique needs of my children. I decided to apply for ESA, knowing I I decided to apply for ESA, knowing I, with the support of a tutor and aide, would be able to give them a stable and individualized education from the safety of our own home. In my short period with ESA and seeing the handbook and everything that's going on, I've seen several areas of concern, one of which is class wallet, another one is the help desk, getting comments back. Class wallet, I've supposedly been signed up, but I'm getting errors and class wallet's never heard of me. So these are all things that I'm seeing problems with. But one of the big problems that I see that's really going to affect the education of my children is the, I guess it's something that deeply affects my family, along with other special needs families. Access to specialized non-medical tools needed to support the unique sensory needs of our children. So children with sensory dysregulation can get overwhelmed, lose focus, have meltdowns, all drastically affecting how they learn. There's a wide variety of sensory tools that have been proven to help children stay regulated and learning, and this is why most schools have sensory rooms and tools that children have access to throughout the day. Items like a wobble stool, a compression vest, and therapy putty allowed my oldest to remain in the classroom and attend to his work longer. And his scheduled sensory breaks helped him stay focused throughout the day. Twice a day, he'd go to a sensory room for 10 minutes and play at a sensory table, swing on the indoor swing and roll on the mats, and then he was able to go back and be in a typical classroom. My younger son was able to participate in circle time by having access to a band that went around the legs of his chair, so he could bounce on that, rather than kicking the other students he was nearby. He would also have a weighted lap pad and other handheld sensory tools. He had access to a mini trampoline to dispel some of the excessive energy, allowing him to get back to task and get learning. While these seem like noneducational items, they are incredibly important to regain focus and improve children's ability to learn. Under the current handbook, a very limited set of items are approved for rental, like a weighted vest. However, there is no place that rents these items, because they're typically cost between $20 and $100 to purchase, and it doesn't make financial sense for anybody to rent them. And I'm not kidding, nobody in Arizona rents these items. So how we're supposed to use these critical items to help our children learn is a problem that we see. I'm not asking for the ability to have extra funds or anything like that. What we need is the ability to use our funds to purchase these items that they would have access to in a public school. Please look at amending the handbook to address the special needs of our students who this program is meant to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. The last two we have here that I'm showing, anyways, are Steve Daniels and finally, Cariya Perez. Steve, you with us?
Yes, sir.
All right, Steve, you can go ahead.
I appreciate it, guys. So, all the other comments that I've heard, I would echo many of their sentiments as far as the privacy related to the debit card, attaching the bank account, things like that. I would want to make sure that there's a better process to protect people's financial information. On top of that, with everything going on recently with the closures, I feel that it's important that the tax dollars that are being spent or allocated per student, per child, are able to be then followed with that student to whichever environment that the parents best see fit for their child. I think it should be an ESA, essentially an ESA-for-all situation. With the closures and delayed reopenings, there's many parents that want to be able to find an alternative resource for their children. And financially, they may not be able to do that, because all of their tax dollars that they've put into the system are staying in that current system, and they're not able to utilize those as they see fit. So, Parents' Rights, as a part of the Arizona Constitution and ARS codes, it does show that parents have the right to direct the education of their children. And school choice is also a big part of that. And in order for parents to be able to provide the best educational environment for their children, they need to have access to that funding. For that money to be held captive is, in my estimation, not only illogical, but it's potentially fraudulent when you look at money being taken from people in the form of tax dollars and then them not benefiting from that situation. So, I would ask that we look at a solution where parents are able to utilize the funds that have been allocated for their children in any educational environment that they see best fit for them. So I would look for an ESA-for-all situation. The infrastructure is already there. It wouldn't be very hard to allow any parent at this point to access those funds and provide what they see as the best educational fit for their children, whether that's homeschool situation, whether that's a charter, private school, online, whatever that might be. They need to be able to have that option and utilize those funds. So, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for your time. So, finally is Cariya Perez. Go ahead. Sorry we missed you earlier, but glad you're back.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, yep, we can.
Oh, good. It's Carrie.
I am so sorry. And you know what? I probably pronounced it like three different ways leading up to that anyways, and I'm so sorry.
At least you didn't call me Kanye. I get called that all the time. So, I know that we're at the tail end, so I'll keep it really short and sweet. I'm an ESA mom, so I've got my fourth child on ESA. And it started because we have two kids with disabilities. They're both on the autism spectrum and sensory disorders. And then my daughter also has intellectual impairment. And so, the ESA program was really a blessing, because inside of the public school system, my child was not being protected from, you know, bullies. Just safety was an issue. We had a lot of problems with her learning. And so when the ESA came about, we just, we really saw a lot of fruit. She was thriving in a private school setting, and I actually was a marketing director for that school for a small, short period of time. And so I can attest to the multiple families that had ESA as well. They came in, you know, with reports from public schools that were just scary and their kids were thriving. And, you know, I was free from a public school setting to be in that. Now, as far as being able to ESA, it would be easy, but I'm pretty simple. Lately, it's been really difficult. Either, you know, you're sending in now there's the class wallet. And I have kind of a problem with that in the sense that I know that you know, we can always be open to change, but when they were doxxed months back and we had that security breach with this administration, I'm really kind of fearful under the reimbursement option, because when you have like the superintendent of public instruction who's buddied up with people from SOS and Red for Ed and all these, you know, I'll just call them like socialist communist organizations, that freaks me out, because I don't really feel that these people have mine or my children's best interest in mind. So I just wanted to kind of express that. Now, it's not everyone, and I know that. And the people when I call are typically very good, they're very helpful and they're very courteous to me, but still, it's, you know, the people that head them up that I worry about. And so, I heard what Steve Daniels, I think that's what's his name, Mr. Steve Daniels, who was talking about the ESA-for-all. And during this time, I would just want to second what he said. I thought that sounded like a great idea, because there are parents who are looking for other options. And then just lastly, yeah. Those were just kind of my concerns. And I think that, just going on from here, that the ESA is great, because it gives us school choice and it's, you know, helping empower parents and to help them advocate for our kids and to be able to continue on for that. You know, I hope parents wake up and look at who is residing over all of this and, you know, vote candidates that are going to be good for us, like Daniel McCarthy's and Kelly Townsend's and Forrest Moriarty's. These are people who really care about our kids. So, I just want to plug that out there and tell you thank you for letting me speak.
All right. Thank you, Carrie. And again, apologies for the mispronouncing your name.
It's my parents. I was born in the 70s.
Well, and also, who am I to, you know, my name is Ketcher, so it's not like, it's not like I have a terribly traditional name either. So last, I did, there was one other person who is still on here. And again, I know Tanya Reiner, you had mentioned that you had some other stuff going on, but you'd leave this open. I just wanted to give one last shout out to you and an opportunity to try to provide a public comment here before we wrap up, because we have reached the end of the list here. So, Tanya, if you are available, now's the time. And it doesn't look like she's back yet. Okay. So, with that, I'm looking at the list of attendees, and it doesn't look like we have anybody else signed in as registered to speak who we missed. But I did just want to read off some of those names, just in case. And I'll just go from the last break that we took. So Sarah Blank, Forrest Moriarty, Amy Bose, Stacy Burke, Tori Smop, Jenny Young, Mara Gosack, Tanya Reiner, Chelsea Harden, and Tamara Wilson. If any of you happen to be on right now, that for some reason, one reason or another, we can't see you, you may give us a shout out right now. But otherwise, give us a shout out in the next minute and a half here before we wrap this up. But otherwise, I just want to thank you all for your time. Of course, thank staff here at the board who helped facilitate this. As I mentioned, this is kind of unusual. Usually, we have our public hearings in person, so I appreciate all your patience. And then just wanted to also hand it off to Alicia Williams, our executive director, to, you know, potentially provide some some final comments here, of course, if you have anything, Alicia.
Thank you, Ketcher. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Alicia Williams. I'm the Executive Director for the Arizona State Board of Education. We were lucky enough to have President Narducci on the call today, as well as Member Burton and other board members who are watching through YouTube on our live stream. The information that all of you have shared today will be shared with the board members when I send them a staff update on Friday. So they also will have the opportunity to hear from you, from you and your voice on the ESA rules. I would be amiss if I didn't thank my staff for putting this together so that your voices could be heard. I apologize if it was frustrating at times with tech difficulties, but this is a new system that we tried, because I wanted to ensure that we had as many people as possible who wanted to speak, that we had the ability to do that. Like Ketcher said at the beginning of this public hearing, board staff, we do, we are planning to have a ESA FAQ type meeting next week. So if you, as a parent or as a community member, have registered with the board staff, your email address, we will, that's how we communicate to you, is through you opting into receiving communications from us in regard to the ESA rules. So for some reason, you haven't been receiving board staff surveys, please feel free at the beginning of the chat, the ESA feedback at azsbe.az.gov. Please send us your contact information. We'll be more than happy to put your name and email address in our contact lists. Again, thank you for your time. I know it was a very long afternoon and I appreciate you taking the time to share your feedback with the board staff. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. We're going to close out the public hearing. As always, feel free to give us a holler if you have any questions or concerns, and we'll be in touch as we move forward in this rulemaking process. Really appreciate your feedback. So, hope you have a great week.